Good afternoon, everyone. We're about five minutes out from our start time. As a reminder, please put your devices on mute if you are not speaking. All of our commissioners should be joining shortly and we'll be getting started. Thanks. Again, good afternoon, everyone. We're at 12:58, a few minutes before our start time. As a reminder, please put your devices on mute. If you are not speaking, we should be getting started shortly. Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair. We have about four commissioners on now, five, six. I see they're all joining in one by one. We got about one minute until our start time.
Yes, Commissioner Strickland is joining me at my location. So he's coming up the elevator as we speak.
Got you. Okay, thank you. And Madam Chair, just as a reminder, since both of you all are both in one location for our court report, please make sure you guys identify yourselves since, you know, it's just identifying your screen.
No problem. Alethea, do we have a quorum?
Yes, we do have enough to get started.
All right, I'm having some technical difficulties where I am. So give me one second and we'll get started.
Okay, great.
Alethea, I'm going to turn it over to my vice chair to get us started. So I don't want to hold the meeting up and then I'll jump back on as soon as I'm actually working out my technical difficulties. Unless you want to wait one second, make me on quicker than I think.
Okay.
All right, I think we're able to work it out. So, welcome to the DCH, a public meeting of the Board of Commissioners. We want to thank you all for participating. At this time, it is now 1:02 PM. I am Dion Bussi Reader, the Chair of the DC Housing Authority. And we would like to begin with our meetings. First, I just wanted to set the tone. This is a virtual meeting for all of you guys who will be attending. Please note that we're asking you to act accordingly. Please put your phones or your devices on mute if you're not talking. You will be called when it's time for you to speak. Each public record, all public records will be open. And you're live right now on Facebook Live and all of our other live streaming networks. And we want to start our meeting and call it to order at the moment of silence as we're actually pulling together the form for the Commissioners. Thank you. And again, I'm going to ask that you guys allow yourselves to be guided and directed with the agenda that we have before us. We're ready to get started with our meeting. I'll open it up to ensure that first, we want to make sure that we have reviewed our minutes.
Madam Chair, I need to call up.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you fine.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Slouver.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Council.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Hoffman. Commissioner Blackson.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz-Gow.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker.
Here.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland. Has he arrived with you, Madam Chair? You're on mute.
He's walking through the door in one second. He got a little lost.
Okay. Commissioner Fisher.
Present.
Thank you. And you have Commissioner Strickland there with you, Madam Chair.
Yes, he'll announce himself in a second, but he is here.
Great, thank you. And Madam Chair, Bussi Reader.
Present.
Thank you. Madam Chair, you have 12 commissioners present. You have a quorum.
Thank you. So first, I would like to welcome, we have with us our newest Commissioner who has joined us, who I know really well, very proud of him and excited that he has joined and to join and serve the residents of the District of Columbia. I would like to give our newest Commissioner, Commissioner Ed Fisher, an opportunity to give greetings to our residents and the rest of the board members. Please, Commissioner Fisher.
Thank you so much, Chairperson Reader. Again, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Ed Fisher and I am pleased and honored to be a member of this commission. I'm a native Washingtonian and I'm looking forward to continue service to all of the residents of our great city, to everyone that is watching and to all of the staff. Again, commissioners and everyone that's here on this call today, I'm looking forward to working with you, looking forward to performing the important oversight of this agency. And I'm looking forward and hoping that we have a great meeting today and many more to come. So thank you all for having me.
Thank you, Commissioner Fisher. At this time, we'll have approval of the minutes from the June 8th Board Meeting. I'm sure we all have read the minutes. If I can get someone to approve. And Commissioner Strickland just walked in. He just announced that you're here so we can actually give you, he's with me now, Alethea.
Right, thanks.
Just say your presence.
Hello, present.
You guys are going to see him up on the screen in a moment. Thank you. So if I can get someone to actually accept the minutes.
A motion in a second.
Motion. Second. All right, motion second. Minutes have been approved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Minutes have been approved. I'm now going to turn it over to our Executive Director for our Executive Director Report.
Madam Chair, Commissioners, and to everyone present for this meeting, I will do a brief report to kind of give you up to date on a few things that we've been working on in this past month. You can go ahead to the next slide, Rachel. And so we've already introduced several times our new Commissioner Ed Fisher. But for those who don't know, I want to just give a little bit of his background because he's certainly come to the Board with extensive experience in community and government affairs. He's a real estate professional, currently serves as Assistant Vice President for Community and Government Affairs at American University. And there he's overseeing the campus plan and the university's legislative and community relations. So he's bringing that expertise as well as development experience in previous roles with the District of Columbia overseeing the St. Lizbeth's project. And also has his own very laudatory volunteer experiences on the Advisory Board. He's a member for Girls on the Run and co-founder of the Man Up Leadership Bootcamp. And he's also a member of the Urban Land Institute. So I just wanted to give that background. And on behalf of the staff to welcome you and to offer our hand in terms of helping you to get oriented to the many complex issues that you will have to decide as a support member. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Donald, and to your staff who's already been quite helpful in onboarding me and giving me a lot of the information that I need. So thank you, Director Donald, and especially to you, Alethea.
Great, thank you. Okay, and speaking of our Board, we did have a celebration for former Board members who left the Board during, over the last couple of years. And particularly those whose terms expired during the pandemic and we didn't have an opportunity to celebrate them and thank them for their contributions to the Board. So several of our Commissioners were able to come out. The reception was actually held at 11:33, which is now North Capitol Street, our old headquarters, which is now a very active construction zone. So everybody had to navigate their way there. But I want to thank our staff, Alethea McNair, Carla Hernandez, and Shanita Hardiman Jones, who did an amazing job at organizing the event and making sure that it was beautifully decorated and people were invited and greeted warmly. Unfortunately, one of our main honorees, former Commissioner Aquarius von Gossary, did not attend, but the Commissioners who did, Deanna Forster and Frances Lane John, her whole last name, I apologize, fearfully, were there and were very appreciative and talked about their experiences on the Board. So it was a good opportunity to come, to have everyone come together. And we also had former members of the Housing Authority, including former Executive Director Mike Kelly, who flew in by request and came in person, and several other staff members and former Commissioners who have been, who have served this organization over the years. Was someone commenting? Okay. Go ahead. I want to introduce to everyone our new Chief of Staff, who is Jenna Savasco. Jenna joined just this last week. And her role will primarily be coordinating the many complex cross-agency issues that we have in our operations. She will be a liaison to HUD overseeing our MTW plan, which of course Hannah is our prime staff person for that. Hannah will report to Jenna. And Jenna will also have oversight of the Office of Customer Engagement. She is, has a Master's of Social Work from Catholic University and Bachelor's Degree from College of Holy Cross. She previously served as the manager over the Department of Human Services Office of Short-Term Family Housing and also Housing Navigator. So she does have experience and relationships with DCHA in terms of the housing choice voucher side and transitioning people from shelters into housing. She also served with me and with Rachel Joseph previously in the Office of the Deputy Mayor for Health and Human Services, where she was the Deputy Chief of Staff. And I'm very excited to have her on Board. She is extremely smart and hardworking and is passionate about serving people and has a proven track record in being able to navigate complex issues and to get to resolution. So I want to turn it over to Jenna to just say a few words about herself or a few more words she wants.
Thanks so much, Director. I'm just really excited to join the Housing Authority. I've spent really my entire career working on local issues in the district and I'm just passionate about continuing to make this city great for all residents. And I'm looking forward to bringing my experience and expertise to the Housing Authority. So look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. Okay. Next slide, please. Okay. So we are still waiting for the HUD report from the onsite assessment that occurred earlier this year in February of this year. We have been in touch, as we always are, with our HUD Regional Office on a number of matters. And we talked to them recently, as recently as last week, about the report. We are expecting it any day now. We thought it may have come last week. It apparently is working its way up the chain in terms of signatures and will come, as I said, any day. When it comes, it will be submitted to me with copies to the Board. Typically, what the process is, that we have a period of time, I'm not sure exactly how long, it's usually 30 to 45 days, I think it's 45 days, to respond formally. This will be similar to an audit. We know that there are going to be a number of findings. It will be no surprise. And we will go through and assess the findings. And certainly if there are anything that we think are factually incorrect or additional information needs to be provided, we will respond in that way. But our goal will be to work with HUD on any issues, any findings, any recommendations to develop corrective action and a corrective action plan and to implement it. We know that a number of findings that we are anticipating are going to be things that we are already actively working on. And, but there'll be a much more level of detail. We are not going to hide that report. We certainly have nothing to hide. We do want the Board to allow us to review the report and to respond and then to work on the corrective action plan. Jenna Savasco will be one of her primary projects to coordinate all of the recommendations, the responses to the recommendations, to make sure that everyone is timely and that we are appropriately reporting as will be required in our plan. So stay tuned. Our occupancy update, I've promised to do this monthly. We, I think we have a slightly easier to digest set of slides to show you where we are in terms of occupancy. And the good news is that we are finally starting to turn the corner. A number of things have to be put in place as we have reported in laying out the occupancy plan and starting to really see some movement. So just for context, I'm showing you the period of January through June of the last three years. And in 2020, for that same period, we only had three new admissions. New admissions being people coming off the waitlist. Sorry for the kind of technical term. But the new admissions are people coming off the waitlist, were only three during that period. And 41 were transfers for people who are already in public housing. And I'll go over that in just a minute in the subsequent slide. In 2021, during that same period of time, we had 25 new admissions and 33 internal transfers. And this year, we're still slow in terms of the new admissions coming off of the waitlist, but we had 15, but almost twice as many or more than twice as many transfers during that same period. So that's, we're just inching in the right direction. But we'll go to the next slide, you'll see where there is some movement and reason for optimism. So this is just for the month of June. We had one new admission from the waitlist, 23 transfers. So that was a significant number, thanks to the work that our PMO Operations is doing under the direction of Nona Eath. Of those, eight were for health and safety reasons, three were for public safety, two, or actually three ADA responses, and then one modification when someone is overhoused that we, their household size has been reduced. And then we match them up with the appropriate housing size. And then there are eight for some reason not specified, or maybe there were multiple reasons. Here's where we are in terms of activity underway. We have, in addition, 36, or maybe we're already counting these, 36 transfer offers through the end of June. So that means that we have matched up and made offers to people who are requesting moves. And they are still going through the process of selecting or agreeing to select the units that have been offered to them. We have an additional 42 unit offers, and I believe those are from people coming off the waitlist. So that number has significantly ticked up. And then five are in the eligibility process. And there are 37 transfers that are still being processed. So the total sum of that is 60 eligibility unit offers for, in the month of June. So again, that's a significant improvement. We have projections that we'll see those numbers increase over the coming months. Go to the next slide. So as part of the whole occupancy plan, we have a number of units we call, that are required to be turned, in other words, to be updated, renovated, so that they are ready for move-in or ready for holding for OCP development activity. So that is a total of 1,080. So far, we have actually delivered on 266. And it's a very large number of units that have actually been updated and are ready for move-ins. The net available number then is 180. And so that's after the move-ins and transfers that I just reported on the previous slide. And you will see the numbers that kind of derive from the number of vacant-ready units. So we're moving in a pace. Right now, the process of turning the units and having them available is ahead of the number of people moving in, but we expect that cadence to be much more aligned as we continue to pull people off of the waitlist and determine their eligibility. Just on the right side, there's just some of the work that is required to make all of this happen. Go to the next slide. Briefly, I want to talk about where we are with the rent payment standards process. And I know that we have a number of landlords who are, and others who are scheduled to speak to this later on in the meeting today. So I'll be curious to hear what their comments, because many of them are involved in our workgroup process. Just to remind the Board, the goals of this process, how to review our rent payment standards, to review rent reasonableness, and to establish procedures and internal controls to make sure that we are paying fair market rent. And so those are the primary goals. We presented to the Board in May initially with initial findings. And we quickly realized that the data, primarily the data listing the unit sizes in our database was very, was incorrect. So we've made, it's been a lot of data cleanup to determine who the outliers are in terms of landlords to whom we are paying above the rent payment standard and even above the allowable rents. So that still processes ongoing, although we believe we're about 90% there in terms of having solid data that we can rely on. We've been creating reports and looking at the data in a variety of ways so that we can draw some good conclusions, solid conclusions. We set up six workgroups that have been meeting. We've had at least two meetings, I believe, with each of the workgroups. And the goal is to have all of our feedback by mid-August. In addition, we have a consultant that we're negotiating with to give us a market update and to make sure that the information that our analysis is correct. So all of that should come together, or mid, end of August, for us to come back to the Board, as we have promised, with recommendations in September. The, I'm sorry, go back to that slide. Just to make sure people understand the workgroups, we have the lender community, we have landlords, we have housing provider associations, we have advocates, agency partners, and then tenants and tenant associations. So those are the different workgroups that we are convening and staffing. Go to the next one. Then a quick update on the right-to-return process. Board members will remember that we launched this process in April to come to bring together various stakeholders who have made recommendations about strengthening the right-to-return requirements or, not requirements, the right-to-return processes for people who have been our tenants, who have been relocated as a result of redevelopment. And to make sure that all of their rights are codified and that everything is clear. The workgroup that is convened by Deputy Executive Director Victor Martinez has two public housing residents who were selected from the Citywide Advisory Board, DCHA staff, two tenant advocates from the legal services community that they recommended, a housing organizer, I think maybe two, and one mixed finance property manager. That group, next slide, has been gathering information, pulling together the various proposals. There are at least three, maybe four proposals in terms of resolutions, to line those side by side and to see where there already is alignment and then to tease out other areas where there may be some reason, some room for debate. The staff has also done some research on best practices from other public houses. The staff has also done some research on best practices from other public housing authorities. The group will meet at least once or twice more throughout the summer. And we'll come back with recommendations to the board probably in October, since we'll have the rent payment standards in September. But we'll be closing out this process over the next couple of months. And to our resident engagement activities, we continue to have a lot of activities through our Office of Resident Services. The UDC virtual summer courses for the, the group of students or apprentices who graduated from the property management program are now moving towards their certification. We have seventeen attendees. And then we also have a medical assistance program with eight attendees. We have an entrepreneurs class with fifteen people in it. Our Family Success Center Resident Recruitment Event in Woodland Terrace had over a hundred attendees. We have a, our homeowner information session that is presented by the Family Self-Sufficiency and Credit Building Program. We had ten participants there and forty participants who who participated in the Family Self-Sufficiency and Rent Reporting Program. And then our summer program, Summer Youth Program, Do Your Best Summer Youth Employment Program. We have eighty youth participating in that. Oh, there was also a hiring event, sorry, at, that was a picture at Benning Terrace that was on June seventh, and I believe we had eighty attendees in that event. And we'll be getting a report on, on the outcomes. But we actually, we had actual employers there with jobs to make, either to take applications or possibly make conditional offers. I and several members of our staff held a meet and greet in early June at Arthur Kapper Senior. As you know, that we just acquired, reacquired that property. So while we still have private property management, we, this is now in our portfolio. It's a beautiful building that is almost completely full. And we have active residents who have lots of opinions. And we want to make sure that our property management, onsite property management is meeting their needs. We also partnered there, you see me standing with a member of the Department of Aging and Community Living, and also Councilmember Allen's office was there as well. We also hosted an education session and site tour for HUD's office, Chief Financial Office, had a lot of interest in our mixed finance property development deals. And did a site tour of, I believe that was the Kapper, the, some of the, the Kapper properties. Looking ahead, we have coming up in two weeks, the RAD Symposium. I don't know if we have sent out the agenda, but we have a very thoughtful agenda that John Stringfield and team have put together. We will have members of the HUD RAD team come and brief the board on what is RAD? What does it mean? What is, what is the intent of it? And there will be plenty of time for questions. We also have four or five jurisdictions who have used RAD that will talk about their experiences, including Baltimore, Montgomery County, Alexandria, Virginia, Tampa, Florida, and Yonkers, New York. And so this is virtual. Everyone will appear, will talk about their experiences, including resident engagement and other issues that have been raised by our board. That's July twenty sixth. Really hope that all of our board members are going to be able to make that. On August third, we have a program, we always invite our board members to our resident programs, this is Commitment to Excellence Scholarship Program, and we'll be giving awards. So Alithia will send that out as a calendar invite for those who want to come. And then on August fourth is another education session, and that is our FY twenty three Budget Symposium. So again, very important that board members attend. If you are not able to attend, please let me know, and we will make sure to do a, a separate briefing for you, because the, the budget will be presented to the board for action at the September board meeting. And then August twelfth, we have a celebration of the summer program, the Do Your Best Youth Program. It's not the final celebration. It is the one for this year, though. And so that's what we have coming up. That's what we've been doing. And if there are any questions, my staff and I are happy to. I see Commissioner Strickland and I see Commissioner Council.
Please proceed.
First, thank you for the report. It was a, it was very informative. I had a couple of questions first about the overhoused. I noticed there was one on, in your presentation. Have we done a true assessment of how many folks we have in our portfolio that are overhoused? And what is our process or plan in order to adjust those? Are they coming to us? Are we going to them? How, how does it come about? You may not know the answer right now, Director, but, but at some point, we would love to hear some information about that. Secondly, there's someone that works at the Housing Authority, Broderick Spencer, has been doing incredible job with youth programs. I've, I've heard at least ten times in the last three weeks from our, our partners over at DOES. And I, I firmly believe we're, we're going to criticize people all the time. We should also praise them in public as well. And so I don't know who this gentleman is, but he's been doing a great job of what, what I've been hearing.
Well, thank you for that. I will have to come back to you on the overhoused assessment. I would rather give you a, a thorough answer on that. And, and, and thank you for commending the staff. We will make sure that we, we send those kudos to Mr. Spencer. Also, didn't report because we're not quite there, but we have a handshake agreement with DOES for a nine hundred thousand dollar plus MOU to reestablish our apprenticeship program that we'll be able to start this fall. So we're very excited about that. They reached out to us as a result of the successful partnership with the apprenticeship program on property management. So that is kudos to our staff. We're doing an excellent job. They were watching. They want to partner with us, and we are very excited about that. That will allow us to do, do a couple of things. One, to train more of our residents in real skills and work opportunities, and two, hire them. So there are real work opportunities. So these programs are not just training exercises. They are training as part of a pipeline of employees that certainly we can use here at DCHA, but also other industries can use as well. I say Commissioner Council.
Commissioner. I think it was Commissioner, First Council and then Commissioner Slover.
The number that you just gave about the vacant units, are we backfilling? Or those units that we're actually putting people in, that's their permanent or is that temporary?
The numbers that I gave are the permanent numbers. This is not moving people for relocation. This is either a transfer because someone has requested it or whatever their personal accommodations, and starting to pull people off the waitlist.
And, and us recognizing our commissioners, I didn't hear you call our very first commissioner on the voucher side, Shalom Fisher and Tala Faro. Were they not in attendance or they were omitted?
And I apologize, Commissioner Tala Fario certainly was, was acknowledged and had a proclamation, he was not in attendance. He was not able to attend. But we delivered his, his frame proclamation over to him. And I don't think that Commissioner Fisher, Alithia, you can, Kirk, if I'm wrong, because it's my understanding there were the four commissioners who left during the time of the pandemic or most recently. Alithia, is that correct?
Yes, she was invited, but she, she was not one of the honorees. Yes, correct.
And my last, where are we, where are we with our liability and safety? Making sure that our residents, as well as our staff, is okay with COVID. Where are we with that?
Right. So we are, as you know, we are experiencing now kind of a resurgence COVID with the new variants. And we have had a bit of an outbreak and on our property management side just over the last few weeks or exposure, I should say. I'm not sure how many were actually affected. And that's actually going to slow down our, our summer blitz a little bit by a few weeks because we've had to make sure that people quarantined. And, and some people actually have come down with COVID. So we are, we have reissued to our staff the mask requirement when people are in the building and in proximity to other people and are encouraging the, the social distancing. And we are kind of reconsidering some activities that we had planned for the summer.
All right, that's, that's all for me, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Commissioner Slover.
Thank you. What is the overall occupancy rate portfolio wide now?
Victor?
The exact number, I believe, is, I apologize, I don't have the exact number, but it's in the low seventies.
Low seventies?
We have about a thousand units that are, that are vacant. A thousand net of the units that we're taking offline for modernization.
So taking offline or are offline?
We're in the process of taking offline. I'm giving you the numbers as, so that's why I said approximately, because as soon as we're done with taking those units offline, that number is going to be bumped up a little bit. But as it stands, it's in the low seventies.
I'm just trying to get clarity, because there's a significant number of units that have been vacant for a significant number of years. That's all included in the seventy plus or minus percent occupancy.
Yes, sir.
So you're going to take additional units offline or those already, I mean, are we taking more offline or?
No, the same number that we had mentioned in the previous board, board meetings. It's just that we're just, we're in the process of talking to HUD and take them offline. So the low seventies number, once that process is complete, should, we should see a bump. It's a, it's a mathematical bump. But we still have to turn all those units. It's a matter of how to do it in, in a way that HUD allows us to prioritize. Six, about six hundred of those will be able to work on those next year. About a thousand is what we're addressing this year.
When you say year, do you mean fiscal year or calendar year?
I apologize. Yes, calendar year.
So next, you're not going to get to the, okay, I, I don't want to get into this right here, but it would be great if you could give us a, you know, there's a thousand units offline. Minus, whatever that number is. And I'm asking, I'm asking this not at the next meeting, as soon as you can.
No, no, I, I can provide you the information. I can email it to you. I can email it to everyone and give you a breakdown so that it's more clear than trying to explain it here.
Just want to make sure I get the proper question out, so I can get the proper response, which is we have X number of units offline. In other words, they're not occupied that today. On this day that we're speaking, they're not occupied. And this is our anticipated plan for them to be reoccupied. Thousand units, this is the schedule. That'd be great.
Yes, sir.
And as soon as you can. The second question is.
Before you go to your second question, Commissioner Slover, Victor, is it possible for us to get a date? Because I'm interested in that as well. How soon will you be able to compile that and send that out to all of the commissioners?
By the end of the week.
Okay, so weeks should expect it, but no later than Monday. Thank you. I just wanted to get a date on that. I'm sorry, Commissioner Slover. Please proceed.
No problem. I think the last board meeting, we talked about the Parkway Overlook Project, and there was a request that you provide a, some sort of analysis or write-up about how we were able to convert people with tenant-based vouchers to project-based vouchers. I never saw that, so I don't know if that's still in the works or whether we're going to get that.
I, I can provide you an update, and I actually had a, a conversation with Commissioner Hoffman about it. I, and I, I apologize, there was a confusion. At some point, we were, we're looking at converting some of these tenant-based vouchers to PBB, because we were coming short. But I'm happy to say that after going back and reviewing, all fifty came from the low-income housing tax credit group. So a hundred percent of the conversions came from low-income housing tax credit to PBB. There was no tenant-based vouchers involved.
Could you just put that in writing? That would be great.
Of course, sir. I will email it as well.
When I hear something fundamentally different, and now I'm hearing something fundamentally different again, I just want it in writing. Everything's great in writing.
You, you got it. And I apologize, that was a confusion. Like I said, at one point, we were looking at that, at that option. And, but no, everything a hundred percent was low-income housing tax credit to PBB. I will put it in writing.
Because you seemed pretty firm that it was the other way before, so let's just get that in writing. On the RAD Symposium, I would make a request, Director Donald. We've had many RAD Symposiums. I've asked every single time that we have someone who's not a hundred percent pro RAD, so we can see a other side of RAD. In other words, not everybody agrees that RAD is the right solution. And so we've never been presented with anything other than RAD is this rosy thing we should all be, you know, begging to do. I would love to hear from somebody who didn't have a great experience with it as part of that Symposium, just so we can get a balance.
Sure. Do you want to make a recommendation? Because I don't know how to solicit that. Or you have people who, or jurisdictions you've heard about?
I, I don't, but I, you know, you got a lot of people there. I'm sure you could find somebody. They could research and find somebody who didn't have a great experience with it.
Okay.
I will not be making a recommendation, but I'm sure we can find somebody.
All right. And on Stringfield's on, but we will follow up with that. Yep.
We, I'm sorry, I thought we were having a full-flared RAD Symposium on the twenty sixth.
Yeah.
Okay.
So I believe. Just asking to balance it out and not just have it being everyone who was positive, pro RAD, but that there's some jurisdictions that apparently have had bad experiences or not so positive. And so I think that's a fair request, and I just will ask the team to do that homework.
No problem. I just don't want us to lose the date that we've set aside to go through our process as well. All right. Thank you. Any other questions, commissioners, comments?
Yes, we're saying RED. There's a, there's a, another component piece to it, which is Faircloth. Are we adding that to this Symposium? Because I want us to, all of it. We keep saying RED. But then we'll get there, and it's Faircloth RED, so I wish we started using the right term.
Yes, sir. HUD will explain all of that.
All right.
Give them a full overview. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland? I mean, I'm sorry, Commissioner Skinner. I'm so sorry.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. First of all, Director Donald, thank you for a very informative report. So I guess my, my concern is with kind of overall how you communicate some of these events to, to the commissioners. You know, I for one, and I'm sure some of the other commissioners would, would probably like to attend some of these events. Like you mentioned, the, I think, Cowsburg Senior Event there. But also things like the educational session for, for HUD with regard to the mixed finance project. So, you know, as, as now Chair of the Dev Mod Committee, I'm still trying to find a lot more information about mixed finance. And so I think that would have been an opportunity for not only that committee, but for other commissioners to learn more about the mixed finance. So just, you know, I would just say, make sure that when you're having these kinds of session and events, that you at least make the board members aware of it, and we can decide if we would like to attend. And then finally, I have mentioned a couple of times, I think other board members have mentioned about getting an up-to-date organization chart. I mean, we have a lot of new staff members, as well as new, for that matter, new board members. And I still don't have a good sense of who's, in some cases, who's in what positions and how they relate to one another in terms of the, the overall agency organization. So, so I would like to see that organization chart with the, you know, the names of the key staff.
Yes, we will definitely get that out. And I thought we had sent the most recent version, of course, we have to add Mr. Vasco. But the previous version, no, okay, apologies. I thought we had definitely done that.
Send it to me, Brenda. You sent it directly to me.
I thought they sent it as part of the orientation package. Sent it as part of the orientation packages, but we will, we will update everybody in um as soon as HR gives us um. The the most recent update, we will definitely get that out to everybody.
Thank you. Commissioner Falchakio?
Uh, yes, thanks uh for the update and just wanted to uh between now and our next board meeting, we may have some pop uh progress at Berry Farm. Uh, wanted to see if you could give an update uh to the board and uh to the public watching as well.
Um, we are driving towards closure on um Berry Farm, hopefully the first week of August. Um, we're just working through the. The multiple HUD checklist um processes that we have to do um to complete that uh that paperwork. I sent you in um. Um, Demped Team, um, the most recent checklist and our staff is working really hard on that. Um, but we're hopeful that we're going to be ready to have. Closing and shovels in the ground in August and then I'm told it's eighteen months for that senior building for people to move in.
Uh, the other item that we were waiting for from the council uh as well, uh I think they moved it yesterday, which was a uh an additional alley closing. Um, so I don't know if you want to have the team just check that out.
Okay.
Uh, but the chairman's office uh notified us at the end of last week that they were going to move it yesterday. I think they did. Um, but um may want to check on that and I think that impacts a future phase. Uh, but for this building one B. So we're just waiting for the, well, going through the next HUD checklist, I guess, and then hope to get to closing in August.
Yes, and there's also something that um Housing Finance has to do in terms of bringing it to to its port. They're waiting on the final HUD, so we may want to have a conversation about. Whether something can be done in parallel. Um, so if you'll look at that last email that I sent with the update. That has that as a note.
Okay, happy to do that. Just uh definitely know that this has been something that everybody's been working on for years. So. Uh, thank you to you and the team for getting it to uh this much closer to fruition. Um, I know a lot of people are excited about this and anxious for it to happen. Um, so I'll definitely take a look at that, but appreciate you updating the commission. Uh, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Um, Commissioner Slover, so you have a still other question?
Uh, yeah, I appreciate you bringing that up, Commissioner Falchikio, but Berry Farm, uh, this is just the one building though, right? How? What what's going on with the rest of the site? I mean, we have a massive undertaking there. So this building is going to be done in eighteen months is what's going on with the balance of the site?
I I wasn't prepared to give a whole update on Berry. Um, so we were just focused on first phase closing, but I can. Send one update or come back next time.
That'd be great to get an update. I mean, I don't, if if we're just going to build one building over the next eighteen months, we've got a lot more work to do than that, so.
No, no.
Great to get an update.
Okay, thank you.
And Madam Chair, if I could jump in on that too, I think the definitely uh. Excuse me, uh, agree with Commissioner.
John, we'll come back to you. Commissioner Slover, did you have another question or your hands still raised?
No, no, I just. Okay, that it wasn't so hard for John to say he agreed with me that he's joking, yeah.
Let's give him a minute to get himself together and then we'll come back to his question or his statement. In the meantime, Director Donald, is there any other additional information you would like to share before we go into the resolutions?
No, I think we can do that pending Commissioner Falchakio's comment and um we can tee up. The resolutions and I know that there are a a few people who have signed up to residents to speak on all. Three resolutions. So do you want us to uh describe them in all three together and then?
Yes.
Comment? Okay.
Yes, and I'm gonna give uh Commissioner Falchakio an opportunity to come back and then we'll go right into it.
Sorry, I was overcome by emotion, uh having the opportunity to agree with Commissioner Slover. So um, I just want to, because I think he's right too in terms of uh. It'll help us keep all of our partners accountable on it too, like this looming issue with the uh the council. Actually having that behind us is important for what happens after building one B. So I think uh happy to, do you want any sort of update or? Um, you know, have the Demped Team help on that too. So just wanted to offer that as well.
Thank you, sir. All right, Brenda, we can move forward. Uh, before we proceed, commissioners, I may not see you all. Do you have any other? Questions? Does anyone else have a statement or comment before we move on to the resolutions? Okay, hearing none, we can proceed.
Thank you. Okay, I'll have our general counsel uh introduce the three resolution.
Good afternoon, Lori Bonds, General Counsel. Resolution twenty-two twenty-five is to authorize the execution of contracts for maintenance, repair, and operations. Supplies, parts, and equipment. Um, this resolution is requesting two contracts, one for to WW Granger Incorporated. The other to HD Supply Maintenance, uh HD Supply Facilities Maintenance Limited. Uh, one in the amount of three million, two hundred and two thousand, the other in the amount of two million dollars. Um, again, those are maximum aggregate awards and for a period of three years. Um, the next resolution is twenty-two twenty-six. That's to authorize the execution of a contract as well. For appliance fulfillment, delivery, and removal. This as well as a three-year contract to HD Supply Maintenance, Supply Maintenance. Uh, for a minimum amount of fifty thousand up to a maximum aggregate amount of six hundred and fifty-two thousand. Um, also again for a three-year term. And the final resolution is to authorize the executive director to execute a contract modification. For the payroll and human resources management software system. Um, that is for. An additional extension of the existing contract for additional three years uh in the amount of six hundred ninety-eight thousand, five hundred dollars. Again, for our human resources system and also to add some uh additional software to the existing system during that period of time. I know we had, uh, again, residents that signed to be able to.
Yes.
Respond to these particular resolutions. Did we want to give them opportunity?
Okay, yes. Uh, Alethia?
The first one we have um to speak on all three resolutions is Ms. Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop?
Good afternoon, everyone.
Thank you. You have three, um, sorry, five minutes.
Okay, thank you. The first resolution, the supplies and parts and equipment for what? Because I know that y'all were supposed to have been changing from these gas. Lawn mowers, leaf floors and all that into electronics. Is that the type of supplies you're talking about? Or could you explain the supplies if I'm not right?
Ms. Eath?
Yes, the supplies that we're referring to in this agreement is associated with those that repair the unit. Uh. Prime example, air filters, um, paintbrushes and things of that nature uh for that. The Elon equipment is a different uh contract that we would enter into for those replacement items.
Okay, so that is, that doesn't include my property. I appreciate you uh explaining it because we don't have filters. You said filters, so I guess the filters were for the units?
Uh, yes, ma'am, but that was, those were just examples of the type.
Okay. All right, and resolution two. Delivery and removal of appliances. But you go into details or you're talking about appliances that are in people's houses or the appliances that be set outside the property?
So it'll be a combination of both. So as appliances, uh as we have to replace a fridge refrigerator. And that uh contract actually includes picking up those refrigerators and taking them back and bringing in another refrigerator. So it's actually them picking it up and uh disposing of it where we don't have to incur additional cost for that.
Okay, thank you. And the contract for the uh payroll and management softwares? Who will be getting these softwares?
Um, I saw Dexter Stark on earlier, who was our HR Director, um, but I think. Yes, uh, Mr. Stark, can you speak to?
Sure. So um the upgrade to our current HRS and payroll systems would afford us the opportunity to, one, um, add more security to um. HR systems and to provide additional um bandwidth to um provide management services. Um, employee self-service um capability for employees uh and that type of thing.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate the explanation for me to have a better understanding of who will benefit this. Thank you very much.
Welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. Um, next we have Karen Settles. I don't believe she's on the line, but she was our only other person that signed up to speak on the resolutions, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Uh, let's give her a moment. Uh, Ms. Settles, are you with us? Okay, let's proceed.
Madam Chair, if we don't have any other witnesses speaking on the resolutions, then I think we can um go one by one and um. Ask for a motion and a second on.
That's right.
Twenty-two to twenty-five.
Let's move forward. Thank you. So for resolution, are we, we're going to do these separately? For the first resolution, I'm going to entertain a motion.
Can we ask, do you have any comment?
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so sorry, sir. Yes, please. All right, here, Commissioner.
Nobody else, nobody else has a question on?
No.
Twenty-five. Um. For these uh buying services, when we don't manage a property, if it's a third-party management company. Are they responsible for the maintenance as well? And so is this contract just? For the property that we manage or is it for our entire portfolio?
DCHA managed.
So the properties that are managed by a third party, they have their own. Contracts and we just pay them as part of the fee they pay them for all these same services?
The contract that DCHA would have with the third party would just be for the property management and so that any contractor services, those um contractors would manage.
Correct. So this, and what's the percentage of our portfolio that we manage versus third-party?
I would have to defer response to that, that question.
Uh, Commissioner Slover, I'm gonna estimate about eight percent. But uh, let me get back to you on that one.
So eight per- eight percent?
Of our portfolio is probably managed.
Third-party managed, eight percent?
Roughly, yes.
Okay, so the.
That's why I said roughly.
So the. What's the total value of this contract? Seven million, five million? I can't, can't do that math that quick.
Five million, two hundred and two thousand between two contractors.
Okay. And that's for ninety-two percent of portfolio. Um, and the reason we added the second contractor from the previous contract is?
Allow us, uh, I'll, uh, known each, uh, senior vice president PMO, I will, uh, I added additional contract to allow for uh us to be able to get services from more than one contractor. So prime example, if Granger doesn't have it, then HD has it, then we'll be able to purchase from there and vice versa, not have us uh solely depend on one contractor.
Well, you were buying from Granger before, we're just formalizing it.
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other questions on this resolution before we go to vote? And I said all of that and you guys said no, because I was muted. My apologies.
Motion.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Alethia?
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
No.
Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Falchakio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, Bussy Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. You have eight yes, four no. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. So we're moving forward with resolution twenty-two twenty-six. Is there any discussion on it at this moment? Commissioner Slover?
So just to confirm, um, this is a contract to purchase which appliances?
This is primarily stoves and refrigerators.
Primarily or solely?
I know you inquired previously with regard to hot water heaters and I don't know what the response was for that. I know, again, this would be primarily um refrigerators and. Um, stoves, but I will defer to Ms. Eath to be able to respond to again that the question you had about the hot water heaters.
No, I got the response about the hot water heaters. This is not included.
Okay, so then it's just the stoves and refrigerators?
Just stoves and refrigerators and it's.
Yes.
Six hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars over three years.
Six hundred and fifty-two thousand, five hundred, correct, for three years.
So my, my response, when we brought this up in the committee, and my response again is it doesn't seem like enough money. For six thousand units over that period of time to replace those types of uh appliances. Um. So who handles the hot water heaters again?
Uh, we'll verify, start, that's under a different contract. Let me get back to you on that one.
And then, I'm asking these questions very specifically because I went out and looked at a property and I looked at the HVAC systems in the units and I looked at the hot water heaters in the units. Both of those systems in multiple units are in horrible condition. And so the question is. Who's servicing the HVAC systems and the management and the properties that we manage? And who's replacing the hot water heaters and those HVAC systems? Because who's ever doing it is not doing an efficient job in servicing them or replacing them when they're needed to be replaced.
Yes, sir, we'll get back to you on that.
So you, you don't know?
No, I, I mean, I, yes, we do in that, in a response provided is that the HVAC, HVAC system. And those that are senior buildings, it's handled by uh RSC Services. Those that are individual properties that we have, then our team, uh, our boiler operations team is responsible for maintaining those.
Specifically, I went and looked at a unit, a couple of units at Benning Terrace who have individual. Heat systems and hot water systems in their units in the singular closet. Neither of those systems were working in multiple units. The condition of which was, uh, to put it bluntly, unacceptable. The filters didn't even clean. And so my question is, whose responsibility is that?
That would be the responsibility, when you were at Benning Terrace, the responsibility for that property would be on boiler operations, on the property management.
And who's, who would be, who would be replacing those hot water heaters? Again, we don't know. So. I'm just saying that whatever, whatever's going on there right now is not acceptable. And um, can we get some uh plan for improve?
Yes, sir. Yeah, PMO is currently working on a prevent maintenance plan to implement that process. As we go through the maintenance blitz that we have going on this summer, that after we do the maintenance blitz to do repairs, then we'll be following it with an immediate implementation of preventive maintenance plan.
Okay, I appreciate that. This is not a maintenance blitz issue. This is a day-to-day maintenance issue.
Yes, sir.
This is, this is normal, you know, maintenance. At every single hot, every single filter I looked at hadn't been replaced in years. So whatever blitz you had last summer didn't work.
Commissioner, we have not had a blitz. The reason we're doing a blitz is because all of the, the maintenance has been deferred. Since Ms. Eve has been here just since December, this is what she has discovered. And so she has directed her team to walk through every unit in the property, which they have done over the last few months to do an updated assessment of what needs to be done. The blitz that we announced and have started implementing this summer is to do exactly that, is to catch up on all of the deferred maintenance. And then she is putting in place a preventive maintenance plan so that we can be in a routine, normal operation, which this agency has not been in for many, many years. That's where we are.
Well, I guess my point is you don't need a routine blitz to go in and change air filters.
True, if we know about them. That's correct.
And telling right now, it's, it's just, we, we, we're not getting into this right now, but it's really unacceptable.
We agree, and that's why we are taking this on the way that we are. Right now, we can only respond to complaints that are made through the work order system. The process that Ms. Eve is leading her team through is to go through every unit on every property and to take care of health and safety issues immediately and to, um, do all of the other improvements over the next few months. This has not been done. This is deferred maintenance that we have stepped into and we're moving forward. If in fact you, any resident knows of any issues, then we bring, then those are brought to our attention and we'll go immediately to that particular unit. That is not the way to operate on a day-to-day basis, but we will address those that we know about.
Okay, there's a final thing I'm gonna say. Air filters are replaced on a schedule. They're replaced every two to three months. You go in and you replace it. It's not, you don't call to have it done. It's routine maintenance. We all know it. We know we have these systems. We know they're not being fixed. It doesn't take months and months and months to figure that out.
Excuse me, as a resident, can I speak on this issue?
Not at this moment, sir.
So that's all I gotta say, and it's, it's not that complicated.
And I think I wanna make sure we're all on the same page. What I heard was that we're actually moving towards a regularly scheduled treatment and plan for all of the filters. And that's one of the reasons why the resolution is on the table today. Am I correct, Nona? Is that what you just explained?
This resolution has nothing to do with air filters.
But it has everything to do with maintenance. It does everything. Please go ahead, Brenda.
This resolution, that if we can stick with the resolution that is in front of the board is about appliances. So Commissioner Slover has decided to talk about another issue that is on his mind, and we have responded to that, but thank you, uh, Madam Chair. The resolution at hand is about replacing appliances. We have a resolution. We made a projection on what that cost would be over the next few years. We have done a solicitation and we're asking the board to approve that resolution. Um, the other discussion is related, is ancillary, but it's not related to this particular resolution.
Thank you. So Commissioner Slover, I wanna make sure you're,
Madam Chair, Commissioner Skinner, and I would like to, uh, move for approval of resolution twenty-two dash twenty-six.
Thank you. I will accept that. Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Alethea?
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fisher?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao? Commissioner Ortiz, I didn't hear response. I'll circle back. I still haven't heard it, but I see that he's there. Uh, Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. And is there a response from Commissioner Ortiz Gao? Okay, Madam Chair, Bussy Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. You have ten yes, one no. The resolution is approved.
Thank you. Let's move on to resolution twenty-two, twenty-seven. Commissioners, do you all have any discussion on that resolution at this moment? Wait a minute. Commissioner Slover, are you frozen or you have no comment? I see you there. You look still.
That's, uh, I'm speechless.
Okay. I'll stay there. While entertain, if there's no discussion on resolution twenty-two, twenty-seven, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Alethea.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Fauchekio?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Skinner?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Blackson?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Ortiz Gao? I think we may have lost him. Uh, Commissioner Parker?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Fisher?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay, Commissioner Ortiz Gao, what is your vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Uh, Commissioner Council?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Strickland?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Slover?
No.
Thank you. Commissioner Lee?
Yes.
Thank you. Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Thank you. And Madam Chair, Bussy Reader?
Yes.
Thank you. You have eleven yes, one no. The resolution is approved. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Stan. Okay. Moving forward, we're gonna go into our public comment. Alethea, could you get us started, please?
Sure. The first, uh, first person we have for general comments, we're starting with our residents who have five minutes, is Ms. Claudia McCormick. Ms. McCormick, you can begin when you're ready. You have five minutes. And I see that you're muted. If you're, uh, phone, you can click.
Sorry, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm Claudia McCormick, the treasurer of the Potomac Gardens Senior Building. I'm looking for an update on the RAD redevelopment plan for us. We had a meeting in October of last year with Director Donald and RAD Representative Andre Gould. I know that HUD has to approve the RAD application. Can anyone find out if the chap, the commitment to enter into a housing assistance payments contract has been awarded to us by HUD yet? I remember that the projection for us to start the move was going to be in the spring of twenty-twenty-three, which is fast approaching. I don't know if that still applies now. I would like to know what to tell our residents about the timeframe for this plan to start. I emailed Andre Gould, the RAD rep from last year's meeting almost a month ago, but I never heard back from him. Then I emailed his colleague, Joseph Chase, last week. He said he'd send me an update by last Friday, but I haven't heard from him yet. I was going to say, any help you can give me would be very much appreciated, but I just got an email from Joseph Chase right before the meeting. He says, "We just wanna inform you that we are still putting together the schedule and data for the Potomac Gardens RAD rep, uh, RAD presentation. As mentioned earlier, we'll be sure to update you on any additional information gathered and share the dates that this presentation will be delivered on site. Please expect a follow-up call later today or early tomorrow." So I did hear back from Joseph Chase. He is gonna update me. They are planning on a RAD presentation for us. And, uh, I appreciate that very much. I'm, I am still interested in the chap contract, but I can ask him about that. So this is almost all null and void now because I got an answer. So just to let you know, uh, we haven't been forgotten. So I appreciate that. I'm not real thrilled, Commissioner Slover, about this whole idea either. Um, we're disabled and elderly seniors to have to move like that, but it looks like they're gonna do great improvements. I can't testify to how it's gonna work out because I haven't been through it yet, but all I can do is have great hope. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Ms. McCormick. Uh, next we have Ms. Paulette Matthews. Ms. Matthews, are you there?
Amy? Yes, ma'am. We can hear. Okay, I don't wanna move away from the dog so that I can hear y'all as well. And you don't have to be on that background noise. Hello, everybody. How y'all doing? Um, unfortunately, I was on the line last month, but just didn't hear my name being called, so I know I only have five minutes. Um, I have a few concerns that I would like to be addressed and not me just speak on it and nothing really be answered. And then I gotta sound like I'm being rude because I keep trying to interrupt and then y'all just cut me off altogether and I'm unable to get on at all. Excuse me. Have to walk up to that. Woo, so, um, my, um, concerns are actually, um, the public safety issue. Um, and I've asked so many years for those who have been on the board and those who are coming to the DCHA family. Excuse me, still haven't got my breath in my steps. About why they never do a monthly report. Um, I had an incident myself where as though I went down to the rental office to report the gentleman who hit my dog due to illegal dumping. That was a part of the, probably why he hit my dog. Uh, cause I had made several statements and complaints at the time when this hot towel was here. And it, it still continues, but he rides past my yard. I haven't seen him in about three weeks now. Um, just making little statements that I don't feel as though he should make because at the beginning and the end of the day, he hit my dog. I didn't hit him and thank God it was no damage really done, um, to that. But, um, I was instructed to call, uh, the public safety, which I left a message because I don't know how many be staffed. I know it was poorly staffed during COVID, understandable to a sense. But since then, and even before then, there had been problems. I also asked on that voicemail if, uh, Chief Moffett could call me and to give him my number. Still to this day, a whole month later, I haven't received anything. So I have concerns about that. Uh, I'd like to know how many actual officers, um, do DCHA have? Um, how many are, um, assigned, if any, to all the properties in which you have? Do you even have enough staff to be able to maintain the properties? And my question always being, um, why do they always refer us to calling MPD? I get it and I don't get it. Cause first of all, if I live on public housing, I should be able to call the Public Housing Police Department, uh, or Safety Team or whatever they wanna call it, public safety staff. Um, and if they feel that what I tell them that they need backup, then they need to call backup to come and meet them here on the property. If there be a need of a stay-away order or whatever the case may be, both MPD and DCHA will both have that person's picture or whatever the case may be, whatever is going down. That both departments will be, um, aware of what's happening and be able to make a decision what's gonna go down the next time around, or something going on a merry-go-round. And that's the way I feel things are going when it comes to, um, your public safety thing. And then, um, I'm bouncing all around because every time I get on here, it's just so much and it's never enough time. I heard, um, Mr., um, oh, God, Slaughter, Slaughter say something in reference to the hot water heater thing. Well, I just recently had to undergo that and what happened was kinda crazy, but I'm just gonna get to the point. Yes, my time up? Hello?
We, we haven't stopped you. Please proceed.
Okay, I heard something, so nobody never cleared that part up. Okay, so, um, HVAC came and they did that, but that was like a two-day episode. So I can say that they came, they did that. Um, and the guy that did the work that came and did it, he did an excellent job, so far, so good. And it was a blessing in disguise because it was someone that I watched grow up, um, that came to service it. I also wanted to have some updates in reference to Berry Farms because we spoke about Berry Farms and what was gonna actually be done in June, had that taken place yet. Um, and I also wanted to know, why is it that, I'm talking about recertification now, and I know I'm jumping all across the board, but you just have to do that sometimes. Um, I know that they asked for your bank account, but my thing is, if you have a bank account and you show them your bank card, you give them a receipt. Why do they feel the need that they have to have a whole ledger of your whole life of how you spend your money? Because thirty percent of that money is supposed to go to them. So if you receive, uh, social security or paycheck or whatever the case may be, most people at work do pay stuffs. If you receive social security and you get a, give them a letter, why do they need to see everything as long as they know that you have an open bank account? And you can show your bank account card and, uh, 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 thing from the bank, not your whole ledger of how you live your life and spend your money. That is just several of the questions that I have, but I have a concern, um, also with my fence. I'm still dealing with that. Ms. Eve and Ms., Mr. Dan, Daning, Daning or whatever is working on it. Um, I don't know what part ADA plays in, in this, but I know it's been a whole year. I know I'm still having issues. And I don't want this to be dismissed. I hear there's certain questions that's being asked and I keep hearing, uh, Ms. Donald and a couple of other people say, we gotta get back with you. I don't understand that part because y'all know that y'all coming to, um, the board meeting. And so,
Ms. Matthews.
every question, all questions should be able to, excuse me, be able to be answered because the part that blows me is that y'all say y'all are get back to us and then when the next month comes, that's not the question. You re, you continue to go on with the resolutions. I have more than that, but we need more than five minutes with you guys. And I don't know when y'all gonna start coming out to properties, when y'all gonna start having meetings, but five minutes is really not enough for all the horror that takes place in this. I've even had, uh, the, my stuff closed out, uh, by Ms. Brown, which shouldn't have been closed out. But like I say, I'm still focusing on my fence because it's causing more emotional and physical stress on my behalf. So all those little, other little things don't matter, but the fact that she came in and she did it is unbelievable to me.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews.
Berry Farm thing look like.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. Appreciate your,
I guess my time is up.
Yes, ma'am.
Mm-huh.
Thank you. So Director Donald, do we wanna do our normal process and respond like we normally do? I know you gave me a list, um, of the complaints or the concerns and we normally respond back. Are we gonna use that route to respond to Ms. Matthews as well?
Yes, I would appreciate it. Um, and we're happy to come out. We're happy to come out and meet with you, Ms. Matthews. You had a, a number of questions I couldn't. We've got some that are public safety. I know some about the fence.
Excuse me, where's the fire extinguishers? Are we supposed to have fire extinguisher? Cause I was getting ready to forget. And that was one of my things too. Where are the fire extinguishers at?
Yes, we can answer that question, um, but, um, Ms., I don't know if Ms. Eve knows. We, we will, we'll come out and meet with you, Ms. Matthews, with all the people who have the answers.
Thank you.
Schedule something, um, the staff will schedule something for, um, for next week.
Thank you.
We'll take the lead and Chief Moffett. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Donald. Alethea?
Uh, next we have Ms. Shontae. Hi.
Hello. The Berry Farm issue is an issue that everybody needs to hear about. Let's not just disregard this and see what I'm trying to talk about me not. I don't wanna be rude because I talked about Berry Farms. We not gonna dismiss this and say you're gonna talk to me on a given day when everybody that's from Berry Farms or whatever needs to hear and know this stuff. Let's not do this, y'all, please, and thank you. Don't do it.
We're actually gonna provide an update on Berry Farm that's on our agenda. It won't be today, but we will provide you an update. We talked about it a little bit earlier, but we will provide you an update. We talked about it a little bit earlier, but we will provide you an update, Ms. Matthews. And I just want to be respectful to all of the other witnesses that we have on the agenda to testify. So if you can allow Director Donald to make sure that she gets back with you next week and your questions regarding Berry Farm, if you want to send them via email or specifically, but we've already discussed that we will have an update on Berry Farm shortly. It will not be today, but you will have an update on the progress that's happening in Berry Farm. Thank you. Alethia, you can proceed.
Yes, I was going from the beginning. Thank you.
Ms. Shontae Ha.
Matthew 712. So whatever you wish that others would do to you, do also to them. For this is the law and the prophets. I say to DCHA that you have held me hostage in a state of imprisonment because I am not physically capable of moving the number of times that you want and require me to. It has been legally documented that I am mentally and physically disabled, yet you continue to discriminate against me, toy with my mental health in order to trigger episodes of severe depression and you feel that it will break me. But what you're doing is building a personal case for me and a better case for the OAG's office, who is currently suing DCHA for discrimination against persons with disabilities. Karmic justice will have its day for each of the members of DCHA that took part, but that took part in the defamation of my character as well as all of the other suffrage I have had to endure. Proverbs 24 verses 3 and 4. By wisdom a house is built and by understanding it is established. By knowledge the rooms are filled with all precious and pleasant riches. For 21 years I have been, I have called Park Morton my home. I have paid my rent on time and I got to note that despite you all sending my rent statements late, I still been paying it on time. And I paid my rent on time that entire two decades plus one year. I have been the model tenant. I have excellent credit, a small business and the opportunity to have been a shining star for DCHA. Instead, DCHA is choosing to try to make me, make an example of me. But again, trying to buy, again, trying to evict me from my home. This time over this redevelopment, when two years ago in 2020, I requested my voucher, when everyone else was being vouched out of my building. I was denied. I have been living in this building solely alone for the last year, five months and 10 days as of today. DCHA wants me to move my resident council office, but has not provided me with keys when a request was made by my teammate, Scott Brown. DCHA wants me to move, but won't give me a voucher so that I may move into a reasonable accommodation for my disabilities when I have applied for places on my own. I have been approved and waitlisted at the Robson at Spring Flats. However, DCHA won't give me my voucher. They, DCHA keeps coming back with things like, we need more information. We need to re-verify your income. All of this information was just done when I renewed my lease last year. Now, if DCHA wanted me, needed me to move that badly, they could have taken that information for my renewal of this lease, put it on the voucher documents and all of this would not be happening. DCHA wants to take me to court to evict me, but this will give me a chance to show all of this evidence to the courts as well as to the OAG's office. Lastly, Psalms 9110. No evil shall be allowed to befall you. No plague come near your tents. As I close, I want you all to remember that it was Ms. Shontae Ha that wrote the Park Morton Equity Plan that DCHA keeps taking ideas from, that they say quote unquote, cannot be done. But however, you're doing them without crediting, without crediting me in some capacity. DCHA refuses to amplify resident-owned businesses with contracts that we can, so that we can get out from underneath y'all, period. But yet you just gave Director Donald to do whatever power she needs to do whatever contracts she needs. And I also asked her to honor my emergency preparedness contracts so that I could make more money. That's it for me. Isaiah 4318. Remember not the former things, nor consider the old things. President Ha, out.
Thank you. Alethia, next.
Thank you. Ms. Wanda Davis. Ms. Davis?
Yes, good afternoon. I was just calling to just let you know. I would appreciate the text messages that I receive, received back on the concerns that I made, even though they weren't addressed. But I appreciate, but I was a little disturbed by the notice of mandatory transfer and where you wanted to transfer me to. I didn't appreciate that. But I don't have too much to say. But I want to know as far as the notices that you send out to your residents, they don't respond to doing what they say they're going to do? I just received a pest control notice for, over the weekend that they were going to be here. There's a window open from eight to four. I'm here all day. Nobody shows up. Then there was about a month ago to come, even though my home had been inspected, you know, as far as maintenance and housekeeping. But they sent another one where housing was supposed to get with HUD. That didn't happen. And when you do this and people stay home all day waiting for someone to come because I don't want anyone coming in my house when I'm not home. People prior and they do things that they shouldn't be doing. So I would like to be here. Those things don't happen. You have another issue that I have is that we have recycling trash cans. Do you have a contractor? Because I know they used to do it, but they're not. I haven't seen recycling being picked up in the Montana area in over two years, if not longer. Sometimes I have to take my son, take my recycling trash can down to the dumpster and dump it. I try to do what is right. But also on the vouchers, I understand things move a little slow during the pandemic, but it's kind of easing up, but it's kind of like getting ready to start because it's going back into another phase. But I had placed, I had put in for a place in a certain area and I haven't heard anything about it. And as the young lady was saying earlier, that when you address things, nothing ever is being said. It's just that when you get close to the time of what you're saying, then you address the things that are going on in your community. I would like to see things better, not get worse. And if you don't speak about it, nothing will ever get done about it. But I see, I've been living here come October the first will be nine years and I've seen the same thing, same activity, day in and day out. And as far as safety patrols and all of that, none of that is happening. Y'all need to come up here on this property, just drive through, starting at 11 and through the course of the afternoon, like right now, and see what is going on. Things can be changed, but we got to work together. And if we don't work together, nothing will ever get solved. And those are my concerns. I come from a scattered site property where I lived on a very nice block until I moved over here. I get emotional when a lot of things, like that disturbing letter. I don't like those type of things because I'm a very good tenant and I would like to be placed somewhere where I do not have to deal with a whole lot. Yesterday, I was getting out of my car and saw 12, 10 to 12 little boys chased after this one child, getting ready to jump him. Y'all need to get something going on up here. I don't come here just to want to complain. I pick up a lot of other issues, things that I hear on your resolutions and would love to participate in some things. But some things don't get to us and some things do. So I don't know. All I can do is just pray that I will get out of the situation that I'm in into something much more better. And like I said, I appreciate the response that, or my texts that I sent to individuals. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Alethia, you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Roland Smith. Mr. Smith, if you're there, you have five minutes. I see he's on the line, but not unmuted. I'll move on.
Before you do, Alethia, let me just say this. I want you all to understand the process by which what we do. Ms. Davis, I want to specifically say this to you. We hear your concerns. What we've done with the staff is we actually asked them to take those concerns into account. There's a process by which you will hear from someone within the next seven days. If you do not, please reach out directly. Director Donald, is that you that they should reach out to directly? I don't want you all to think that we're hearing your concerns and there's no response, but we do have an internal process by which I want to continue to follow and we will follow up. And if you do not hear from Director Donald, you can always reach out to me directly or any of the other commissioners. So I want you all to hear us. This is not that we're hearing your complaints. We're not hearing it and it's falling on deaf ears. We actually have a process by which I do not want to use it. I want to continue to allow this process we have in place to work. So know that, Ms. Davis, you will hear from someone from the staff within the next seven days to actually address and give you a timeline on when those issues will be rectified. And that goes throughout everyone that will be testifying. I wanted you to hear that directly. Thank you so very much. Director Donald, is there anything you wanted to add to that before we continue?
I appreciate that, Madam Chair. And of course, many of these issues, we already are working with the residents on as Ms. Davis alluded to in terms of response to her texts and following up to find a place where she feels comfortable relocating. So yes, we are working on those and we, she's raised a few other issues, but we will continue working on what we've been working on and will follow up on the new issues that she's raised.
Thank you. I don't want. Appreciate that because I never want you all to feel as if we're not hearing you. We hear your pain, we hear your anguish and we do not want you to continue to feel that you have to suffer in these conditions. So please give us the time that's necessary to respond to you and we'll make sure that these issues are rectified to the best of our ability. Thank you. Alethia, you can proceed.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Patricia Bishop. Ms. Bishop?
Good evening, everyone. I have two concerns to bring to the board's attention. These texts are surveys. A lot of people have these Obama phones. They're not going to waste their minutes. So please find another way. If they could send it in a text, they could print it out, give it to me. I'll pass it out or give it to the management to pass it out. They need to see these surveys and not have to go at this, at that and see these surveys on their phone. Because that burns their little 60 minutes out also. And I very much appreciate if y'all found a better way to deal with that, even from developers or other housing surveys that might be sent out to people's phone. Appreciate that. Now, my next and biggest problem, I have reported this the same day that it happened to the management office. They should not have to have their staff remove big bags of plaster that a contractor from a busted wall somewhere located in the building placed in the laundry room. I am not going to move no 25, 35 pound bag of wall plaster out of the laundry room and nor is the person who is doing the laundry room. That's not our duties. There's a trash can where they should have disposed of it at. Please make sure that you reach out to them by paper, by email so that this will not happen again. There's a camera in the laundry room. I don't know if somebody's watching it, whether it was reported and handled the proper way. But this is something that me as resident council president is not going to tolerate cleaning up behind somebody else's mess placed inside the laundry room. Thank you very much and I appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
Ms. Bishop, you owe me a call. You and I are supposed to connect. I'm waiting for that.
Well, we, we was missing you last month. Thank you very much. Ms. Walker sent you a text or email to you?
Okay, I'll follow up.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
No problem. Thank you. Please proceed, Alethia.
Thank you. Next we have Seven Monroe. Seven Monroe. Okay, I'll move on. Keisha McDougal. I do see a Keisha McDougal listed. I think.
Okay, this is Keisha McDougal.
Okay, so I called Seven Monroe first. So let me put you on hold, Ms. McDougal, and go to Seven Monroe. Ms. Monroe, you have.
My part is Ms. McDougal.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yes, my name is Ronald Smith. They called my name earlier, but.
They know that.
Oh, okay. Hello?
Okay, let's do this in order. So I did call Ronald Smith earlier, who did not respond. So Mr. Smith, I'm going to allow you to proceed and then we'll go to Seven Monroe and then Keisha McDougal. Is that okay?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you. You have five minutes, Mr. Smith.
If I may, my name is Ronald Smith. I've been in the department in housing for about 10 years. Just recently, I've been in contact. I've communicated with Eleanor Holmes Norton's office. I've testified before the, the city council twice about my issue. I applied for a voucher back in 2006, January 2006. Okay, I've called every month to update, to find out where I'm at on the list or whatever, whatever, whatever. To cut to the chase, they're now telling me that they're not issuing vouchers because their primary concern is the homeless and whatever like that. I've heard several other people speak and I have applied on my own to several different places, Spring Flats, South Capital Apartments, as well as Ashbury Dwellings, because I'm trying to get out of National Capital Housing. I'm 75 years old. I'm in poor health, me and my wife both. And all we want to do is get us a decent quiet place to live, right? Everybody knows what goes on in National Capital Housing, so I won't elaborate on that. But I'll just say that I'm trying to find a decent place for me to live out the rest of my life. Okay, now I was approved at South Capital for the South Capital Apartments. They accepted me. But now the part where HUD was supposed to move in and pay the other part, HUD turned me down. Okay, a couple of weeks later, I got a call back. Somebody asked me was I still interested in the apartments that subsequent to my last communication with them, that HUD had called them back and asked them was I still interested? Okay, that's been two or three months ago. I haven't heard any more since. I don't know the person that called me. I've called back to South Capital Apartments, right? I can't seem to find out who it was to call me. But, but, but the, I guess just what I'm saying, I'm just trying to find a place to live. And I don't understand, just as the other people stated, why it takes so long. I understood at first that they was giving out, that they was giving out project-based vouchers and also that they was recognizing a tax credit. I've tried both of those things and to no avail. So I'm just, I keep getting these responses that something is going to happen. This is going to happen, it's going to happen. I want to get out of National Capital Housing. I mean, I understand about the improvements that they plan to make and all of that. That's fine and all well and I empathize with the homeless. I had been homeless myself back some 20 years ago. But what I'm saying right now, I'm speaking about the here and now. But I'm saying right now, I'm speaking about the here and now. But I can't get anything concrete. I can't get anybody to give me anything that I can go on. So I'm going to cut my five minutes short and give it to somebody else, get the rest to somebody else. I wish I could hear something back from some of y'all as to what I can do, what my next steps can be.
Mr. Smith, this is the executive director, Brenda Donald. I'll have Hamra Gabreia to contact you specifically, so we can make sure we understand exactly what you are eligible for, where you are on the list, who you've been talking to, and kind of sort through, you know, try to kind of sort through the issues. I'm not sure what you might be eligible for, but we will.
What's the person's name?
Her name is Hamra Gabreias. And she is, yeah, she's in charge of our Housing Choice Voucher Program. We have your information. We will, do we have a, yes, and we have an email address for you. I will have her reach out by email and then schedule a time to talk to you, okay?
Okay, thank you, dear.
Thank you.
Yeah, have a blessed day.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith.
All right.
Alethia?
Okay, now let's have Seven Monroe.
Ms. Monroe?
Did we lose her?
Ms. Monroe, you can't hear us. Yeah, we can hear you now. Please proceed.
Okay. Good afternoon. I have two subjects I would like to speak on. And the baseline for the first one mainly is about the safety in my unit, which is M Street Delaware Ave in Greenlee Gardens. We were told earlier this year that we were going to receive a door that needed to have a key to get in this building, but we have not received a door. They replaced the door, but the door that they replaced it with is heavier, it's slammed so hard. It still does not lock. And if you have paintings on your walls or anything, they get knocked off anytime the door opens and closes. Due to the door still being unlocked, there are people who do not reside in this residence. And they have taken it upon themselves to do human feces, urine, and also give the people who do live here sexual advances at some point. I reside with my mother, and the same has happened to her as well. Other than that, the people that have also been relocated recently, their units come to find out have not been locked. People have been going in and out who do not live nowhere in this neighborhood, and it just does not feel safe anymore. Me personally, I suffer from a bond disease where in the past six years, I'm thirty-six years old at the now, but six years I've had both my knees done, and I'm soon next month with my hip one and then my ankle. If anything was to come as to us being relocated as well, hopefully we will soon. I would preferably like to stay somewhere close in the neighborhood where everything is in walking distance. And I believe that's it for me.
Hello?
Thank you, Ms. Monroe. Next, we'll have Ms. Keisha McDougal.
Good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Keisha McDougal. My address is thirteen twenty Missouri Avenue Northwest. I am currently being housed in an extended stay hotel in Greenbelt, Maryland. I have been in this situation for a month, a bit over a month. My apartment flooded in the beginning of June, end of May, beginning of June. From that little experience, my apartment has been trashed. The floors have been pulled up. The cabinets and walls have been pulled down. Tons of mold has been exposed. I've been living in that apartment since two thousand eighteen, the end of two thousand eighteen, under a slumlord. And my case managers under Metropolitan Educational Solutions, which are the people that hold my PSH voucher, okay? They have done nothing to get me out of the property or anything, or to check the landlord. So currently, my landlord is trying to put belongings out. Mind you, my apartment got trashed, trashed by the contractors. I did not know any of this until I went back to my apartment to pick up a few items so that we can ease our living in the hotel, me and my two children, okay? I am currently homeless, but I have a home. It doesn't make sense. The inaction of housing, my Metropolitan Education Solutions, the council members, and other organizations that I've reached out to is atrocious. It's disgusting. It gets passed around. I get passed around. I get passed around. I am disabled, both physically and mentally. I need several surgeries. My family is falling apart, not just due to this incident, but too many that led up to this, okay? We went two months without a refrigerator. My caseworker knew it. Yeah. I lost my job last year due to my health, and I got behind on rent. Some things happened, a lot of stuff. We were moved out again last year in January for them to demolish my apartment. Again, my apartment was trashed. This time they did it worse job. I've been in and out of the hospital due to a lot of the stuff that happened in my apartment. And it goes unrecognized. It goes untreated. But by the grace, but by the grace of Community Family Life Services and Empire DC, I am being supported. The agencies that are supposed to support me and my family doing this are inactive, okay? They're ducking conversations. They're passing the buck. They're leaving me hanging, okay? I'm out here in Maryland. I can't get my medications. My children are caregivers. I'm missing appointments with neurosurgeons because that's how serious my situation is, okay? I have to keep putting my health on hold due to this housing BS. So I have an emergency move voucher now, okay? But nothing has happened. I've contacted tenant advocates. I've contacted Janice Lewis. I've contacted many other organizations, too many to name, too many to name, to just get stabilization. I can't operate in this chaotic space. My family is falling apart. My health is suffering. Therefore, my children are suffering. I'm a single mom. Please understand that stability is paramount in the sustainability of our lives. I'm sure you guys know that. Okay, I've reached out to many people in housing, my housing directors, my housing specialists, my leasing specialists. People can't commit or answer one question because I gotta pass it on to somebody else. One question, okay? Any question. When they comment on something and I ask them, oh, the leasing specialist, oh, the housing specialist, oh, this person or that person. But dang on it, why can't you answer the question? You just spoke on it. This is delaying the process. This is constantly delaying. Not to mention, not to mention that you guys aren't vetting the landlords that you're allowing to rent to, to voucher holders. My landlord doesn't even have a business license. Prima Row Harlem Oak Properties, okay? I am in constant pain. I am in constant pain, constant pain. They're threatening, she's threatening to throw my belongings out. I have yet to go through my belongings to sift through the things that are salvageable, full of mold, full of mildew. My children's belongings, trashed, tossed. I don't know what's been stolen. I don't know what's been damaged. We're living out of a hotel. Do you understand? We did that already. We did that already in two thousand eighteen in a shelter. We should not have to repeat and revisit these traumas onto my family. We are unhoused. No, no. We have housing, a hotel room for all of us, okay? But we should not be having this done. I understand there's processes and things that need to go on, but like I said, the inaction of all these agencies is disgusting. Disgusting. You guys should be ashamed. I've heard other people talk. You guys should be ashamed of yourself, how you treat people, the law of society, if you probably deem us that, that is able to low income, or whatever, you know? All we want and all we desire is a safe place to live and to flourish. And we cannot do any of that if the place is not safe and if it's not healthy, if our environment is not stable. I doubt anyone can function under that. Okay, so we don't have a house. My health is poor. My children are falling apart. They have mental health issues as well. And I still have to be a mom through all of this. Now, my landlord is threatening to throw our stuff out this week, but you guys still paid her for the month. What happens? What happens then? Do you have any answers for me?
So, Ms. McDougal, first of all, let me apologize to you. Let me tell you that this is not how we want you to feel at all. We understand the urgency of the situation, but I do want to allow our director and her staff to be able to give you the adequate response, and I'm not certain if they're prepared to do that at this moment. Director Donald, how do we want to proceed with Ms. McDougal?
Ms. Gabreias was just texting me, and she's going to follow up. She's, obviously, this is very complex and layered. And I heard Ms. McDougal say that she had an emergency housing voucher. So I just want to make sure she has all of the information necessary to facilitate her move. But also, she raised some issues about our oversight of the landlord, and that certainly is something that we need to address as well. So Ms. Gabreias has already made a note to follow up.
So if we could at least.
Also has other properties. And this is the thing, I've battled with this because I wanted to put her on blast before, but I don't want to disrupt another family that is also low income or whatever. I don't want to disrupt another family.
Yes, ma'am. We have a team that goes out and investigates landlords, and that's our audit and compliance team. So we want to connect all of the dots. We want to make sure that we address your immediate issues first.
And if it's possible, I hate to do this to you, Brenda, and I know that's not our procedure, but if at least we can reach out to Ms. McDougal today to know what her process, what her process will be, well, no later than Friday, so she's clear on who's going to be calling her and how she can proceed. And I know we have to unpack all of her concerns, but I don't want her to feel as if this is something that is not as urgent as some of our other matters. We want to make sure that we're addressing it because of her health concerns as quickly as possible. So, Ms. McDougal, we want to make sure that you get a contact. Director Donald's going to ensure within the next forty-eight hours that you hear from someone immediately on the staff. We're going to unpack all of your items. And once again, if you do not hear back from a staff person, you're more than welcome to reach out directly to the director, and if she's unable to respond directly to myself, we're going to give you immediate issues, but it's no way possible for us to respond to everything that you just mentioned on this call today. So if you can at least give us an opportunity to deal with this, and you're going to hear from someone today. Is that okay for you at the moment? I know it's not resolving the issues, but we're just hearing about it.
I understand, and I respect that you guys are just hearing about it. But like I said, the, you know, just to keep it, just to keep it one hundred, this should have reached you guys weeks ago.
You're right. You're right.
And I've spoken, like I said, to my caseworker. She literally is not answering the calls now because she felt really on a phone call we had yesterday. She couldn't answer the questions. Her supervisor, Mr. William Young.
I understand. I understand your problem. What you doing? What you doing? What you doing about it?
Nothing. These people, oh, I didn't get the call. Weeks later, they respond weeks later. So forgive me if I do not believe or trust that I will hear from any of you people within the forty-eight hours on our order day.
So what I'm going to ask Alethia to do is to send you my contact information directly, because I don't want you to think that this is not going to be addressed. I know you're saying you don't trust the process, but the only way we have addressing it is to deal with you directly. And you have my word that that's going to happen. We're going to unpack this problem. I trust Director Donald and her staff. We're going to unpack this problem, and we're going to give you your steps and how we're going to move forward immediately. So let's trust the process just this time. I know it's rough, but I want to make sure. It's no way possible we can address this right now. We have to take this offline and deal with it appropriately. So we're going to actually get that information to you. Somebody's going to reach out to you today. Somebody's going to reach out with you today. That's what Director Donald said. So we can at least get a direct line of communication with you and begin to unpack this. So that's what Director Donald stated, and I'm trusting that you're going to hear from someone today.
Thank you. Do I need to put my email? How are you going to contact me?
We have your information here. I'm looking at your cell phone number and your email address.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop.
You're welcome.
Okay, so.
Thank you.
For a moral, for a moral check, a morality check, okay? Please do not say something that you're going to do that you guys have no intention of doing.
No, you're absolutely right, and that's why I said to you.
Because if it was your family, because if it was your family, how would you, what, what would you do?
No, I hear you. I hear you. So you're not, this is for your morality, for a moral check with you. That's why we're saying that today, we're going to get at least a phone call with you so we can take this conversation offline and unpack all of the issues. That's why I said that. And when they give, when they give you the call today, you got to give us the ample amount of time to address each issue. You raised quite a few. So we're going to be in constant communication with you. Alethia is going to give you my contact information, and I'm going to work directly with our executive director to ensure that these issues are addressed. We hear the severity of it, and we're not pushing you off. So I need you to know, we just got to unpack it, and it can't happen on this call.
Okay. One other thing, my phone is broken. I've dropped it many times into moving back and forth of places. So hopefully, I will be getting a new phone today, which my email is available. So if someone should call and I don't answer, it's because the phone is malfunctioning. Until I get a new phone.
So we definitely will utilize the email. Commissioner Slover, you have a comment?
I was just trying to get some, I appreciate it, some clarity on how you ended up in the hotel. So was that, who put you to the, who's paying and who put you to the hotel?
Okay, so we had a flood, a small flood, but it flooded the building. So the landlord put us in an Airbnb for three days, right? Hoping that the issue, that it would be dried out, the contractor would have dried the apartment out, okay? Once that happened, they discovered that there was so much water that the water was coming up through the floor, the ground, which already, they found crumbling pipes before, when they demoed my house before a year ago. But, so, the landlord couldn't pay for anything. The landlord couldn't do anything. This is her responsibility, by the way. Community Family Life Services, which I have a relationship with, they are covering me. They are covering my housing, and they're well over ten thousand dollars now.
So.
Because.
Director Donald, and we can talk about this at a time, but what would normally happen in a situation where something like this with a voucher holder who lost their housing? Wouldn't we be responsible for coming in and assisting? I'm just trying to understand how someone else is covering the hotel, and so that's.
I can answer that. The community providers handle that. That's what the community providers do in this particular case. Am I correct, Director Donald? Or do we actually?
I'm not certain, because I'm trying to make sure we have all of the facts. I do know my staff issued an emergency voucher on June twenty-eighth, so I'm trying to understand why we're here at this point. And I think it's more appropriate that we have the staff to follow up and make sure that we're understanding everything that has happened and why the situation is, why Ms. McDougal's in the situation she's currently in, because she does have.
We just had the clothes on our back. We don't even have, you know, we don't have our belongings, just a few clothes on our back. We had to hurry up and leave.
So what's. What sounds to me like Director Donald's, the emergency voucher would have created, would have allowed a different housing situation because of the one, the flood. So that process, and then somehow the community provider came in and then she ended up in a hotel. So that process and then somehow the community provider came in and then she ended up in a hotel. But she did get a voucher issued.
She does.
Okay, that's great. That's all I, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you again, Ms. McDonald. And again, we apologize for the situation. Ms. Dugle, I apologize. Apologize for the situation, ma'am, but we're on it now. Um, Alethea?
I hope you, I hope you guys are on it and I hope you could, put the urgency, the sense of urgency and, 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 and to your heart that you would have for your family. I hope you guys know about it from that perspective, if this was your family. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list is Sharon Moore. Ms. Moore. Ms. Moore, are you able to unmute? Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Mr. Robert Lee.
Hello?
Yes, Ms. Moore.
Yes, this is Sharon Moore.
Okay, please proceed. You have five minutes.
Okay, first of all, I'm at two zero three M. It's Ameri Street, South Plaza, apartment number fourteen, Greenfield Gardens. I've been here for a decade, going on some more years. I did not know, I have been to every community meeting, I have volunteered, I've done everything possible. I did not know that my neighbors who have been here for two years or less had emergency transfer requests, which I had previously previously put in for. They had since moved out of the building. The only way I knew that they had an emergency transfer to, to relocate was because I asked them what was going on and she told me. I was the one who brought up to move to James Creek, okay? This one was going to James Creek, another one has the house, the other one was moving over there near to the senior citizen building. I had to go to the office myself personally to request for an emergency transfer. My daughter, we talked to her earlier today on the phone, seven Monroe. She is, she's a breast cancer survivor. She has degenerative bone disease. And like she stated, security in this building, I had, I am sixty-five years old. I had physically, physically fought someone trying to try moving my balcony to go up to the second floor where the door is unlocked. And as my daughter stated, there are tree seeds in the hallway. When I called housing police, they tell me to call nine-one-one because they get there quicker. Nine-one-one comes, where are the housing police? I stood right in my hallway with them two days ago with these vacant units. I'm the only one on the shore that's left on this shore. And there were squatters at a brand-new fan in the chair up there by the window. And the office, the lady in office was going to ask me to hold the door for the maintenance man to make sure he's secure. Are you kidding me? Housing police never showed up, never. No callbacks, no nothing. I want to move because these buildings are getting ready to be torn down anyway. I don't want to go where they're going to send me. I want to go where I had originally requested two years since moving in here. I was told then I had to wait until I was sixty-five, senior citizen age. Okay, I'm sixty-five, I'll be sixty-six next week. I want to go to James Creek and please do not tell me that James Creek is, has no vacancies. I walked there, I walked through there. When I go to the post office to get my money order for my rent, I walk through James Creek. Yes, there are vacancies there. And yes, I do qualify. I like this area because of the convenience. I have the safe way I can walk to, at the post office I can walk to. I have nine-one-one, housing police ain't. I leave that word to your imagination. I have schools, I have churches, I have grandkids, I have two great-grandkids. They go to camp, we have a duck pond. I want to go to James Creek because if I, I don't, yeah, we have to move. This building is being torn down. So just don't pick me up and put me where you want me to go. That's not how it's supposed to work. I requested James Creek, I've been to every meeting. Even talked with the developer who's in James Creek. Now, one can go there, I know they're going to wear, you got room for two.
Yes ma'am, we, we will review your transfer request. Have you put in a transfer request?
After I've get, I've given the transfer request to Ms. Bodie in the office. I've also sent a copy with a one-page letter to the Department of Housing. I say one to Ms. Walker, who's the tenant's husband.
Okay, let's take a look at that, um, so that we can understand, um, what you're requesting and what is, is available to you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, Mr. Robert Lee. Mr. Lee, are you able to unmute?
Yeah, yes, how you doing?
Could be five minutes.
Yes, thanks. Thank you for all the people that has, um, expressed their, um, issues in which they're dealing with. My issue on which I'm dealing with basically is similar to basically everybody that has already spoken. I have been basically systematically traumatized in my own apartment. Now, from the time that the paint dried on my wall, I started seeing mold and mildew, um, coming through my walls. I mean, which point where though it was bubbling up. So the next thing you know, I, I, I basically realized that, well, I didn't realize it, but it started affecting my health to the point where as though my doctor was telling me that I was creating bronchitis. So, and when I went to the rental office and I told him, I said, look, I got, I got mold and, and, and mold issues in my, in my bathroom. They came in there and they did my wall, that my, my wall in my shower has, the mold and the mold issue is basically internal because it's all in the wood on the inside. And what it did, it separated my wall. They have been in there in my house at least two to three times to put up a new wall in my shower. They have been in the, um, my neighbor's house over top of me at least two to three times to put in a new wall in his shower. Then I just went over there last week, he told me that, um, his wall is starting to separate again. Now, I'm not living in my apartment. You know, both basically the conditions in which we are living under, most of us is, that can't abandon our places, have abandoned our places because I'm not the only one that has abandoned my place over there in Kentucky court. Basically, they had, once they started doing all the building over there, they had, they, they, we, we started dealing with a lot of mice and mice issues. Uh, the next thing you know, turn around. Now, when it can't, not in the meaning to skip around, but what, because I do have a lot of issues in which I'm dealing with. But when it came to, when it came to the paint issue in my house, when I went to the rental office, I live in a senior citizens development. Well, basically, and I basically got it from different, from, from past mental traumas. And like I said, I had been basically traumatized within my home development because for one thing, when I went up there and I told them, I said, look, where my place needed to be painted, the walls, the, and then they had a sign up there telling, look, these places are going, we're going to move these people out of these places and, um, and do, do some renovation because it, the place is contaminated with lead. So, next thing you know, I, I took it upon myself because it was affecting my health and I couldn't wait for them to, to move me because it was affecting my breathing. So what I did is I took it upon myself because I, I do lead removal and, 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 um, and, and asbestos. Now, once they said that, that, um, they had lead in the apartment, I know for a fact that lead is not harmful to your intelligence disturbed. Now, the apartment that I was living in, the humidity level is so high, that is why it's, I have internal mold. Now, now, when I did the work in my house, when I did the work in my house myself, I turned around when I, I didn't have the, um, I didn't have the equipment to put the molding around the wall. I'm, I'm usually, I know how to paint. So the next thing you know, after, after doing all the work in the house by myself, I turned around when I called the maintenance man to come in there and, um, put the molding around the wall. He looked at the molding, the old molding around the wall and said, I mean, nah, you can keep that molding right there around the wall. So what I did, I said, look, man, I don't do no half jobs. So what I did is I tore it up, tore it out. And I said, look, you got to put the molding behind the wall. And, and I was also telling him, I say, every time you come in there and do some work in that bathrooms, see, these places are very old. Every time you disturb the towel on that wall, the next thing you know, you got, um, asbestos all over your bathroom. Why? Because for one thing, the sta-, um, the adhesive that was, that they were using at that time had asbestos in it. So turn around, so basically I did all that and I went up to the office, then I turned around. When I first went up to the office, my, um, landlord was, car was there and a police, and a, and a housing police car was there. I knocked on the door, they said they wasn't there. I ended up going back. And when I went back, it was just the, um, la- um, lady in there. Next thing you know, to make a long story short, I'm in there, you know, explaining to her, you know, what I just did. And then I was, and at the end of the conversation, I said, yeah, well, I was, um, I, I just thought, because I brought the asbestos and stuff that's in the, in the laundry rooms. I said, y'all, y'all send out letters saying that we're going to be moved for the lead. You need to send out letters, you need to add also the asbestos in the, in the laundry room. And then she said, oh, Mr. Lee, I'm glad you told me that. And I said, yeah, I'm just telling you that so that when we move, there wouldn't be a problem moving back. By that time, the police had walked in the door, took the word problem, started poking me in my chest and talking about that sound like a threat. So I looked at him and I say, I, uh, I say, you don't have to touch me to, to talk to me. Then he continued to poke me in my chest. And, and then, once he's continued to poke me in my chest, I looked at him and I said, what are you trying to do? Intimidate me? Which I basically informed the, um, landlord of the different scars, phobias that I have when it comes to, because she was sending the maintenance man down there banging on my door because, because she felt like I was calling in too many work orders. I mean, it's a whole, and the thing about is he, oh, then turn around. So when the officer kept putting his finger in my chest, he was between me and the door. So in order for me, I knew once I touched him that it was going to be on. So the next thing you know, when he went to go put his hands on me again, I pushed him as hard as I could out the way of the door. I ran out the office, the, the, the officer met me outside, jumped on my back and bounced my head on the concrete like a basketball and I proceeded and I took my foot to get him up off my back. I took my foot while on my stomach and kicked him in the balls. Then he jumped on my back. To make a long story short, they end up charging me with assault on a police officer. Now, my family do everything they can do to basically keep me out of harms way when it comes to the police officer and my bills and all that. Now, this, that experience basically traumatized my mother. It traumatized me, gave me a new phobia because now I got a phobia of police whiz though. I'm glad they got that six-feet law in effect because for one thing, I just like, they just jumped out on somebody just around, just around me. Next thing you know, I jumped up like they, they jumping out on me. So I really realized that I do have a new phobia that I must deal with when it comes to my disability. Now, my thing was, so I end up turning around-
Mr. Lee, I'm sorry, I need to interrupt you. I've let you go well beyond your time. I'm sorry. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Well, my thing is, well, my thing is, just to make, I'm, I'm, I'm going to complete this. Now, what, what, I had to leave town, get my hair together, come back in town. Now that I'm back in town, I have been putting in transfers from the time that I realized that this thing was affecting my health. Now, they trying to deal with me as if I just put my transfer in yesterday. And at present, I'm living in my mother's basement. Then they going to tell me, yeah, well, your, your, your place was trash. I left my place to get my hair together and went to Memphis. When I came back, my, I locked up my place when I left. When I came back, my place was wide open. So evidently people was hoarding in my place. But now, I even, I'm even traumatized going over there in my place, but I did go over there and clean up all the trash that was on the thing. And I, I'm, I'm, I, I appreciate you taking the time out to hear me, but this is a matter that needs to be dealt with very soon. Because I, at present, I'm being traumatized and my mother's being traumatized. Now that my mother's being traumatized, it is really working on my disability because for one thing, it has driven me to a level that, you know, almost to a point of no return because for one thing, once the police assaulted me like that, I started riding around with a car that, that didn't have dead tags and everything and knowing that I cannot be questioned by police. So, all I'm saying is that really, I just really need somebody to really hear this, to be, if y'all say that y'all going to get on it because see, for one thing, housing had already been in my house, seen the type of conditions in which I was living under. I mean, officials from housing have been in my house, seen the conditions in which I was then living under and saying they going to get right on top of it and that was like five years ago.
Mr. Lee.
Yes ma'am.
We're going to have to, we've allowed you to go so far over your time. We're going to have to move forward.
I'm through. I appreciate you taking the time out to hear me out.
Thank you.
Well, y'all going to do anything about it?
Same process I mentioned earlier. Sir, the staff would immediately follow up with you within the next seven days and provide you more assistance in your, on your issue. But it's hard for us just to take what you're saying right now and provide a response. All the staff that deals with this are not on this call. But the director has assured us that the process that we have internally will definitely be followed and we will make sure that your, your issue is already on record. We will definitely follow up with you within the timely manner.
And I appreciate that.
No problem. Commissioner Slover, you have a comment?
Yeah, it'd just be great if the board could get an update on the, uh, conditions of that particular property that Mr. Lee is talking about. Sounds like it's not just, um, confined to his unit. But it sounds like it might be a, a property-wide problem. So that would be great if we could get some update in a timely fashion. And it sounds like it's been a while.
Matter of fact, and I, and I'm not going to exhaust too much more of your time, but the only thing that they were doing when it came to maintenance was the outside. And the last time that I've been over there, the grass is like ten feet high on, and the outside, they have, now they're not even doing the outside. So I live on Capitol Hill and it, and it's very embarrassing to be able to go into a development which is housing. And that's the worst development on a how, on a whole prop, on a whole block. Even if you walked, if you went around here now, if they didn't do it today, the grass is at least ten to fifteen feet high. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. We're moving now to our non-residents who have three minutes, uh, to speak. The first on the list is Craig London. Mr. London, are you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you can proceed. We have three minutes.
Okay, thank you. I would like to commend Director Donald and her staff on the approach they are taking to study the payment standards and in-place voucher rents that have been frozen since two thousand eighteen. It's nice to see that Director Donald has worked hard to receive a crash course on the mechanics of the HCVP lease-up process and has quickly come up to speed on exactly how the rents are set at each lease-up. Her approach has allowed all stakeholders to make much progress in the past sixty days to dispel many incorrect assumptions and myths such as the false claim that the in-place rents are at one hundred and eighty-seven percent of FMR and another false claim that the housing providers charge and DCHA approves higher rents for voucher tenants than for market rate tenants within a building. All stakeholders seem to agree that we need to determine what exactly are the fair market rents. In defense of Director Donald and her recent predecessors, fair market rent surveys in DC are easier said than done. There are two reasons for this. Number one, in DC, the relationship between supply, demand, and pricing for our rental housing is distorted because of widespread rent control in our aging housing stock. Number two, buildings that are exempt from rent control are the exceptions and not the rule and there exists a wide range in amenities and building conditions causing wide variances in fair market asking rents within the same neighborhood and bedroom count. Furthermore, with more than fifty neighborhoods times six-bedroom sizes creates the need for more than six hundred unique market rent data points for both with and without utilities. Creating an accurate fair market rent survey is no easy task. Both DCHA and the housing providers share a common goal of stable and predictable rents so that DCHA can properly budget for its expenses. and housing providers can budget for their future rent, future rental income. There is an elegant solution to this shared concern. DCHA should create a two-track rent refresh system to include both periodic and annual adjustments. Track one, periodic rent adjustments. DCHA should conduct market rent surveys that exclude rent control units per HUD guidelines to correct for payment standard errors and anomalies whenever they are discovered. Track two, annual rent adjustments. DCHA should reinstate annual rent adjustments using the widely accepted DHCD method of CPI plus two percent. These non-controversial annual rent adjustments will allow DCHA to create responsible budgets and give housing providers and lenders the predictability to invest and create new housing options for HCVP tenants. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. London. Uh, next we have Philip Simon.
Hi, thank you. I want to start off by thanking the board and the Director Donald for their effort to include landlords in the payment standard process. I, I don't think, um, I did not think that it was, we were going to be included to the extent that we are. And I also see how well the Director Donald was starting to understand the mechanics of the system, which is making, having a conversation about it easy. I do have one question for Director Donald, and it's on the rent study. Will DC Housing be outlining the parameters of the proposed rent study, or will you be using HUD's parameters outlining the rent reasonable in this program guidebook?
Now, we'll discuss that with, with, um, with the work group members.
Okay, thank you.
Is that it for you, Mr. Simon? Okay.
Yes, that was my only question. Thank you.
Is there possibly that I could say something else real quick?
Who is speaking?
Keisha McDougall.
I'll yield to the chair.
The chair, chair just stepped away.
Okay, Ms. McDougall.
Okay, um, just real quick. So when you guys expect the unit, I was told by the, well, my unit is currently inhabitable per my landlord. But prior to that, she informed me that that unit was not supposed to be rented or sold. So they had known about these problems in this unit. And I don't know how it got passed housing or anything, but, you know, just to let you know that my apartment was, was a, was a trap. You know? And so, we suffered as a result of that going in. But thank you for allowing me to add that little part. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Desiree Baines. Ms. Baines on the line. I see Ms. Baines listed. Are you able to unmute? Okay, I'll move on. Uh, next is Lee Simon. Mr. Simon.
Hello. Uh, I'm testifying again about potential changes to the rent standard. Let me start by saying I really appreciate the landlord work group I've been a part of, especially last week's presentation. As mentioned in the meeting, whether this ends up being a reasonable change to the rent standard or just an internal administrative change, I hope the process remains transparent. A couple of points I'd like to make while DCHA and the board is contemplating a change. First, a market rent study in DC has to be done carefully and correctly. In order to establish market rents, it has to be clear that non-market rents, such as units whose rents are held artificially low by rent control, inclusionary zoning, and other programs are excluded. It would be great if the RFQ for the third party doing the study could be shared, because if the data and direction given to them is not correct, the information they return is not going to be correct. And it was suggested that a one to two percent annual escalations could be put into between rent studies. Some landlords, like Craig mentioned earlier, suggest using CPI plus two percent, which DHCD already uses for controlling leases. But it has been five years since there's been a rent standard increase. And in that time, expenses have gone up, property taxes have gone up, et cetera. I would request that the rent standard annual increase is being considered, that it should be implemented on its own schedule and not be delayed waiting on a third party to complete a rent study. And then I'll just finish where I started. It would be great if the current communication and transparency could be continued. It would be greatly appreciated if the ideas being considered, the directions and data given to the third party doing the rent reasonable in a study and the study itself were all shared. I would especially like to stress that sharing the information and voting on it all in September meeting is not enough time. If the vote is going to be in September, stakeholders need to receive the information at least a few weeks, or hopefully a month before the next meeting. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Uh, next is Felipe Ernst. Mr. Ernst.
Yes, um, hello esteemed members of DC Housing Authority. Uh, thank you for taking the time to listen to the public and take into consideration our real-life experiences and point of views. My name is Felipe Ernst, um, and I am adamantly opposed what is being proposed with the right sizing of the HCVP rents. Um, I was born and raised in the District of Columbia and I'm currently a housing provider. Um, I would like to echo a sentiment that I believe the mayor supports for the goal of the Housing Choice Voucher Program. And that is that the Housing Choice Voucher recipients have the ability to live in any housing dwelling without having to face discrimination based on their income. What is being proposed will directly harm the residents of this great city from having options. If rents are right-sized, our residents will have less options. Look, the Housing Choice Voucher Program is working. At the end of the day, it's really working. We're creating a more diverse and equitable DC by having those most vulnerable have the options to live in all eight wards. By trying to right-size the rents, it'll harm the residents' options by limiting them. It'll harm housing providers' um willingness to open with voucher recipients, possibly go delinquents on their operating expenses and their um mortgages. And it'll concentrate Housing Choice Voucher recipients into Ward seven and eight. The Housing Choice Voucher Program is a program that needs to be replicated all over the country. And what is being proposed will ruin the promise and progress that we've made over the last few years. Thank you guys so much for your time.
Thank you. Um, next is William Johnston. Mr. Johnston. I don't see him listed. Um, next is G. Young O. I don't see this person listed either. I'll move on. Uh, Mr. Daniel De Palago.
Uh, thank you, Ms. McNair. Um, good afternoon, everyone, commissioners. My name is Daniel De Palago with Empower DC. I've got a host of issues that I, I, I wanted to, to ask about, and they're all in the realm of the redevelopments. I, I encourage uh the director, the board, I think we need monthly updates on all active redevelopments. I was disheartened to hear the young lady from Potomac Gardens asking what's happening with our Rad, because that's exactly what we've been trying to figure out with the Melville Project, um, who, uh, folks still don't know what's happening. We, we would love to hear an update on what's happening. We heard certain things about closing. Uh, but we still haven't heard anything. The last communication, I believe, um, that happened was last year, there was a meeting that we were able to get with HUD and DCHA, um, where we learned a couple of things, but since then, there's not been a real update on what folks, what's happening rather with the redevelopments. And uh, folks are still concerned. When am I gonna move? What, how's that gonna impact me? Where am I going? When am I gonna come back? I think the other thing that I'd like to flag for the commissioners, and I've, I've said this before, I think we need a lot more transparency on these development projects. Um, you know, as mentioned, we started out the, the meeting speaking on Berry Farm. And there are so many pieces that need to happen. And I'm not, I don't envy your job, because I realize that, you know, it's, it's very hard. However, I don't think residents get a full scope of what's really needs to happen. So folks are told, yeah, you're gonna be relocated and you come back. That sounds great. If I'm living in a, in, in horrible conditions, I'm all for that. However, so much happens in the interim of relocation and return that folks don't get a, a real clear picture when they're coming back, right? Like, I mean, we're hoping, last we heard about Berry Farm is that we hope we closed in June. Now it's August. I understand things change and it's hard. But nonetheless, I think at the very least, residents are due, like, even if it's not a really um super update, uh, like, let us know, let residents know what's happening. Um, because we continue to, you know, hear questions from, from residents. We speak often to mellow residents and folks are still concerned about what's happening, about relocation and all of the concerns. So I'll, I'll leave that there. I want to lift up um Ms. McDougall's situation. We've been supporting her. I think it speaks to a bigger issue of, I don't know if the agency at least is ready or at the moment prepared to deal with these emergency issues. Um, I did attend the, the, the meeting where Ms. McDougall was issued her, her emergency voucher, but I don't think the people there knew that it was an emergency voucher. So, uh, you know, there needs to be some alacrity, uh, and, and I realize that some steps are gonna be taken. But I'm speaking to, I think, you know, Ms. Ms. McDougall does not have the time to wait. She could potentially be out on the street if the funding dries up for uh her hotel stay. So, you know, from the inception of this issue, there could have been a lot better um attention to what really needs to happen. And then, of course, the people that are designated to speak with her, like the case, I forget the terms, but you know, the, the, the case managers or what have you, um, you know, need to be prepared to really take action and be informed and educated on what they can actually do or where to escalate and when to move it. Because now at the end of the day, Ms. McDougall can end up on the street. So.
That won't happen, Daniel. And I'm, I'm sorry, you, your time is up. We want to make sure we give everyone else an ample amount of time to actually share their testimony. So I appreciate that.
Just one last thing. I wanted to flag that um tied to the redevelopments, the, the interim work that needs to happen to maintain properties. I've gotten a lot of calls this month from Greenleaf residents who are dealing with conditions issues. I know the grass has not been cut at twelve hundred, especially around the outside units, just irregular issues. So.
We got you, Daniel. We actually talked about that earlier. We're on top of it. We appreciate you. Thank you. Alithia?
Thank you. Uh, next is Hamza Rizian. Okay, I don't see this person listed. I'll move on. Uh, next is Rob Pilkington.
Hi, good afternoon, everybody. Um, my wife and I are small landlords with three units in the HCVP program. And I'd just like to comment on the work, ongoing work related to the rent standards. Uh, we've been following closely the information circulated regarding these standards over the last couple of months. And I would like to second Mr. London's and, and both of Mr. Simon's comments uh just now. Um, this is a really important issue, not just for us, but also for the program's overall success. So I'd like to thank DC Housing for the, the, the step up in efforts over the last sixty days to engage with us and other stakeholders. At the same time, we do request uh DC Housing to really double down on these efforts as the communications we're receiving is still very limited, often secondhand and unclear. This is important for the board to understand, because this uncertainty, especially rumors of rent reductions, is already having impacts on the units available for the program. And I give, I give one example. We're renovating right now a five-bed family property in the Eighth Street corridor that we'd always imagined would be perfect for a voucher recipient. However, with this uncertainty and the need to be sure that we can repay our financing costs, we're now actively thinking of a redesign more suitable for market-based, young professional house sharing. This is just one unit uh that may well be lost from the program, but I suspect there'll be others, other landlords out there taking similar real-time decisions, which would be a real shame, given where the program's got to. Uh, we'd like to continue to work with the program, but what we, what we need is for DC Housing to do two things. So the, the first is transparency in the short term on the rent study mentioned earlier in the presentation. And particularly, time for a full review of any proposed and background studies that come from that, come, from that work before any decision is taken. And secondly, commitment from the, DC Housing for long-term stability and predictability around rents such that landlords such as ourselves can take informed decisions about whether to uh invest in providing more units or indeed removing market, uh, removing units from, from the program. Um, and of course, to the extent uh possible, for this to be done with local unassisted market rates by neighborhood and not thinking that working at the zip code level is appropriate. Thanks again to the board and DC Housing for their support in making this hap- happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next is Chadi Malwad. I don't see this person listed here on the webex. I'll move on. Uh, Kelly Brown. Kelly Brown. Okay, I'll move on. Uh, Joe. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Yes, uh, thank you for giving us this opportunity to uh talk today. Uh, so I'm a small uh housing provider in DC. And I just want to uh testify about the uh rent payment uh standards. And there have been discussions about decreasing the rent and adjusting them to market rate. Uh, as of now, I, you know, we've done our own studies and we realize the the kind of rent standards are not uh above market as it was, I thought before. And I thank Director Donald for continuing, continuing on uh engaging with the landlords and the Housing Provider Association. Uh, so I, a- as we move on, I would like to have uh more uh transparency and more uh direction on where this is going. And uh, you know, I, I like being, helping families and being in this program. And as a previous speaker, Rob, you know, also a landlord, mentioned, uh, we also have a couple of units that we were gonna uh, you know, uh designed in order to accommodate a larger family. But with the proposed rent, it would not work financially and we would not be able to afford uh to pay our mortgage. And that would be less units available on the market. So I hope this will be taken into consideration. And uh, that's, that's it for me. Thank you very much.
Hello, good afternoon. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, who's speaking?
Yes, this is Desiree Baines. I've been trying to speak, but um for some reason, you guys couldn't hear me. Um, you called me a few minutes ago.
Can you repeat your name, please?
It's Desiree Baines.
Desiree Baines, okay, please.
Can I go ahead now?
Yes, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. Um, Director Donald, members of the board, thank you for your time today and good afternoon. Um, as I indicated, my name is Desiree Baines, and I am a small housing provider. Um, like one of the previous callers, um, I was educated in the DC public schools. My family was a beneficiary of government-funded housing programs. And today, I am not only a homeowner, but also a housing provider in the DCHA voucher program. This achievement required hard work, sacrifices, and delaying gratification. But this success is tenacious, as any changes to drastically reduce rent rates will contribute to financial insolvency. So I'm happy to hear that DCHA and the board have listened to the voice of small housing providers such as myself, who are strategic partners with you in providing affordable, quality, safe housing for DC low-income residents. I thank you for taking the time to listen to us and to do the proper analysis using quality data to make a decision on the proposal to reduce rent rates that was put before the board earlier this year. Please continue to hear our voices and understand our financial vulnerability. Margin on rents are very low. Margin on rents are very low. Insurance, taxes increase every year. Labor costs for maintenance are high. Material costs arising due to recent issues in the supply chain. We are asking for the following, and you may have heard this from other callers today, but I will just repeat them. We're looking for transparency with your research and decision-making. We're looking for clarity and consistency in DCH's goals to modify rent rates. We are asking that rent control units are excluded from your data analysis as they negatively skewed numbers. We are asking that rent increases that have been forward for three years be resumed as soon as possible. And finally, we are proposing that DCHA consider providing wraparound services to tenants for issues such as, um, drug problems, domestic issues, basic household management, crime, hoarding, and, um, as we've heard from a number of the residents today that are facing, um, lots of different issues that are, I've listened to these and they're overwhelming. So I think providing those services consistently for tenants will help both them and DCHA and the housing providers. Again, I thank you for your time and again for, um, pausing, making a decision to do the right and proper analysis using quality data.
Thank you. Uh, Paris Karkey?
Yeah, hi, uh, thank you for, for, you know, for this platform. I'm a housing provider, I'm also a Realtor. So what I do is that I, uh, between me and my clients, we provide about fifty-four housing units for different sizes, anywhere from two bedrooms to like six bedrooms. Just because of all this, uh, commotion going on about rent decrease, my clients have pulled out about like six or seven units. And I used to do about two units, I was bringing about two units to the market for housing, you know, for families. We've stopped doing that. So in the last three months, I haven't been able to add anything at all. Um, and some of the houses that we have currently, we're redesigning them for market rent because the market rent's been so good. Right? So I would, you know, echoing all the other small landlords that were talking before, I, I echo their point. That was, that was something that I had actually listed out for myself to talk about. In addition to that, um, I wanted to ask you, the new, I think there's a new study being commissioned. If so, who is it being assigned to? Because the last, uh, study by Nova something was disregarded. So this time around, who is it being done? And, uh, is it gonna be transparent? You know, we, we're asking for some transparency for the data. And then will we have an opportunity to verify the data? I think somebody told, talked about like having at least a month before you guys make a decision to, for landlords also kind of verify the data and see what's, what's wrong with it and stuff like that. In addition to that, are there other avenues being explored for the funding gap that we're trying to seek? You know, the, the rent is being reduced because I think there's not enough money or something, but is housing looking for new avenues for that? And then the third question I have is like, is there a meeting or some platform being set up between the landlords, commissioners and tenants so we can all come together? This platform is good, but it's really, really long. You know, it's, it's like three hours before we can get points. There's a lot of, uh, uh, other issues you guys are talking about, but we're more interested in talking about this specific issues. So are there, is there a platform that we can bring all the commissioners, some tenants, or a lot of tenants and landlords so that we can discuss this in person?
To your questions, I'm not sure if you're involved in the, if you've been participating in the work group. One, we are, I'm looking at consultants now. And two, in terms of the scope of work and on the market study, as we said, we would share that with the work group and get some input on that. And three, in terms of the data, we have been sharing the data. Victor Martinez has created a, um, very comprehensive, um, SharePoint with, um, information data. And then we're constantly updating and has made that available to members of the work group. To your final point, um, we, we do have to come back to our board with recommendations. I don't know what the form is gonna be, probably at a committee meeting, but, um, perhaps we would have an opportunity to meld the work groups. Since we do have landlords, we have tenants, we have associations, we have lenders, we have advocates, so we have tried to cover all of the bases. And, and in fact, in the SharePoint Drive, all of the, the minutes and members of each group are listed on that and you can click on each, um, each tab. So we've been, I mean, this is the most transparent process, I think. Others have given us feedback that, that, that we've ever organized. It's very complex and, um, we're still, you know, wanna make sure that we have solid information, facts and good data before we come back to our board with recommendations. Part of the market analysis is to determine what are implications for this up-down and, you know, in terms of costs, in terms of adjustments. Some people have spoken about, this is about lowering the rent. It's not, it's about looking at the rent standards and making sure that, that the rents are fair and reasonable and predictable and that we can come back to our board with recommendations. So doing the analysis is partly, it's gonna talk about the financial implications, um, to your final point. So we're not there yet. We are building towards getting there throughout this whole process that we, that has been evolving and, um, that other, um, members who've been participating have talked about earlier. We're in a much better place in terms of information than we were where we started, but we are not yet there where we need to be to come back with solid recommendations yet. Hence, we're continuing the work over the next month.
One, one last question. Is that, is this email on SharePoint being sent to all the landlords out there? Like, is it being sent to?
Well, we can't send them to all, we, we have five thousand of them, right?
As a patient to, um, you know, maybe collaborating the group or anything like that. Because, um, I have, you know, um, I know, I, I was there when it started with Ross Brown and stuff. We had this talking group, you know, like, I, you know, I saw the meeting, I was there too. But since then, you know, things have evolved in its own, I guess, way. So some of my clients were in, in that meeting, they also don't know what, what's happening. So just like how DCHA sends out like a portal, you know, email saying, hey, this is happening, that's happening. I was wondering if that's a way we can at least bring this in front of all the landlords that are providing housing to, you know, as our housing providers in general.
Yeah, and so you can certainly send a follow-up email to myself or Victor Martinez. I would say we, we started this, we're reaching out to the landlord association so that we could cover the bases with their members. We are also gonna be participating in a town hall meeting that, um, the small and Samoa group, Small Landlord Association Group is organizing to reach a broad, you know, the, the, the larger community. Every time someone has raised their hand and indicated that, that they were interested in participating, we have welcomed them in. But, um, so, but main conduits are really through the associations, A O, Basmoa, um, the, um, I forgot to do the, several other groups. And then we have broken into the specific work groups with members who are either self-selected or have been recommended through, um, through the different associations. We also expanded to, we didn't have tenants at first. We have tenants, we have associations. So I think we have, you know, created a really wide tent to get a lot of input as well as to share information and we continue to do that. And I see Commissioner Slover and Commissioner Parker, uh, raising their hands.
Commissioner Parker, you can go ahead.
I was wondering if I could, uh, join and have put my input in in regards to housing for seniors and disabled persons as obviously vouchers for that, that group is of great interest to me as a, uh, senior and disability advocate.
Friendly Commissioner, we'll follow up with you.
Thank you.
And, uh, I would, if there is an opportunity, would welcome, uh, the opportunity to be presented to. I think the board, um, could use, um, some interaction with the group at some point if that's doable, um, before our vote, given the, uh, given the response that I keep hearing about, you know, what it appears that people think we're trying to do versus what we're trying to do. There seems to be a bit of a disconnect and I keep hearing, oh, we're gonna move and, and, and put our apartments to the market rate, but that's what we're trying to pay. And so I'm just, I'm just confused as to why we're, these moves are somehow destroying the program or taking away from the program when we're just trying to pay the rent that everybody else is paying. And so that's the big disconnect that I have. And don't, let me finish. And so someone, you said that there's, there's a funding problem. There, there is, the funding problem is that we have a certain number of dollars and we need to create as many vouchers as we can with those dollars. And the more vouchers we can create, the more people we can house. And so what we wanna make sure is that we're paying the rent that we should be paying and not some created rent. So that's what this process is all about. And at the end, it's gonna result in us paying a market rent and that's our hope. And so the whole process that Director Donald is running and getting everybody's input is gonna hopefully result in us paying the market rate rent.
You're absolutely right. I think, you know, it should be market rent, right? I think it'll be a separate discussion because I think it'll take a lot of time right now. And I think there's a work group already set up for this. But I, I do think that it's, uh, you know, the, the pain points of landlords, you know, the process that it takes, the time it takes actually to rent these places out versus that quicker turnaround. Actually, we're getting higher rents outside right now. That's what I'm experiencing right now is like, I'm getting higher market rent than what I'm getting from voucher rent too. But also the maintenance of the, you know, maintenance of properties. One of my properties has been damaged so bad, like, you know, it'll probably cost me fifty thousand dollars and it's actually a tenant-done thing. And, you know, there's, could be an argument saying that, oh, you could enforce a lease. But if somebody was already on voucher, yeah, I could go get a judgment, there's no way I could collect on it, right? That's a whole separate thing. But the time it takes to rent, it's usually about two to three months. The process that it, we have to go through, the amount of maintenance that it goes to, right? And then every time you turn around the, uh, house, amount of money that goes to, I think is also significantly higher, you know, versus some other, I guess, clientele, right? But I think, uh, Commissioner Slover, I think there's already a work group set up and I don't wanna speak for all the landlords out there. But, you know, this is, I, I'm just relaying information that's happening for me, for my investors, in terms of like, you know, uh, what they're feeling with the, just the commotion of, or the notion of like decreasing the rent, you know? Um, and that's what I'm conveying. But I think it might be, you know, it'll be best, I think, we could have all the commissioners out there too. Also, like, hear all the landlords and tenants together before we go, go to this big vote.
Commissioner, we are very clear about the charge.
Good, because it sounds to me like they wanna charge more rent for our clientele. And so that's, that's what I'm hearing. And so, yeah.
Very clear. Okay.
Were you done, sir?
Oh, yeah, for now, I think I'm done.
Okay, all righty. With that being said, let's conclude our, um, our board meeting. We will not have one in August. Our next board meeting will be Wednesday, September fourteenth, twenty twenty-two at one o'clock. They're aware. If you want to get further information, you can reach us at dchousing.org. Everyone, have a safe day.
Thanks, staff. Just stay on this line instead of going on the other one. We'll do our wrap up.
Mr. Karkey, the meeting is ended. You can just hit exit and leave.
Okay.
The red X at the bottom. Thank you.
Carla, you can stop the recording. And Shanita, you can stop the live feed as well.
We can also release the court reporters.
Ms. Matthews?
And Commissioner Lee?